Oh, boy. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wayham Planning Board for Monday, May 8, 2023. Hello. Nice to— glad you could join us. Wayham Planning Board, Monday, May 8, 2023. Also being televised via Zoom. We will call the meeting to order with a roll call. Sherri Corrick.
Here.
Mike Baptiste.
Yeah.
Jane Gleason.
Here.
Sam Corbett.
Here.
Carl Schultz.
Here.
And myself, Mike King, here, full board. Preliminary business, approval of the meeting minutes. Start with July 25, 2022. I don't know if everybody had an opportunity to review. I didn't have any issues with this one. Yeah, what? Yeah, we can— well, I mean, I had a couple of small scrivviness we could note, and then I've got one I can't vote on because I wasn't here. All right, so we have meeting minutes for January 25, 2022, August 1, 2022, August 8, 2022, August 22, 2022, September 12, 2022, September 26, 2022, March 27, 2023, and April 3, 2023. Any comments on any of them?
Just one comment on April 3, 2023. We were having a discussion about the sole source aquifer, and I was making a—I made a comment about the importance of understanding that it was captured as solar source, not soul source. Just a type scrivviness error.
That line is—appears to be highlighted.
It is highlighted, yeah. Did you highlight it?
No.
Somebody else was paying attention to it.
Okay, yeah, so that should just say soul source.
Okay.
Yep, I'll just cross out solar and put in soul.
That was—everything else looked pretty good.
Anything else?
And I'll put that in as S-O-U-L, right?
Sherri, did you catch any?
I did not.
Michael?
No.
Jane?
Nope.
I found one. Ha. Now I can find it. I should have tagged it, but I didn't. It was just a typo as well.
It's a common.
March 27, 2023.
Yep.
Page 2.
Yep.
Top paragraph. Also spoke about the water that would or wouldn't be ousted to use if the battery system would catch fire. I just revised that. I got rid of ousted to use and just put would or wouldn't be used.
So take the word ousted out?
Yep. And just replace it with used.
Or wouldn't be used, okay.
So remove ousted to been used.
Yeah.
And just put in used. That was it, other than that, that's all I saw.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I'd like to move that we accept the minutes of 7:25, 2022, 8:01, 2022, 8:08, 2022, 8:22, 2022, 9:12, 2022, 9:26, 2022, 3:27, 23, and 4:03, 2023, as amended.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sherri Corrick. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam? Carl?
Oh, aye.
And chair votes aye. 01. Item 2, Shell Point Place Street Name Application. I saw the—the paperwork to be signed, and I did see a note from the Police Department, but we didn't—nobody weighed in from EMS?
EMS should be in there. They did not have a problem with application.
Is that David from EMS?
Yes.
David Evans? Okay.
And the name is going to be Ben's Way, is that what we're—
Ben's Way with an apostrophe, yes.
Okay.
So it looks like all the important people in town have weighed in, that there's no concerns over the name. So I would entertain a motion to accept the street naming application for— let's see, I'm gonna get this right here. Proposed name within the proposed subdivision shown on the plan entitled Shell Point Place, 69 Great Neck Road, with the proposed name Ben's Way, B-E-N apostrophe, yes.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Carl Schultz. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I didn't see— is there anybody here from Baypoint? Did you get the email that we sent, Tim, concerning our issues with some missing documentation? Okay.
Want to— You want to announce it or do I have a meeting for me or is that tied up to your behalf to come to this?
Yeah, they're doing.
Yeah, come on up. I'll—I'll say it once you're—once you're seated. So next up, 3-23 Baypoint Club LLC, A&R 19 Baypoint Drive, map 2 lot 1004B and 1004A-1. And since we're talking—uh, no, we'll keep them separate. Okay, and you are?
I am William Rosa. I'm an attorney with an office at 90 New State Highway in Rainham, Massachusetts, and I appear before you on behalf of the Baypoint Club LLC.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, before the applicant speaks, perhaps I could raise some questions and then perhaps he—
Has answers for us?
Yes, and some of these are to Mr. Buckland as well.
Yep.
Just a—some confirm—this is from Mr. Buckland. In—in the past, we've been working with site plan, special permit, and subdivisions, and modifications. Those documents were subject to the 2016 zoning bylaws. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. The A&Rs that we're seeing tonight, would they be subject to the current bylaws or are they subject to the 2016 bylaws as well?
The 2016 bylaws.
Because the—the zoning is protected.
It's protected in this instance for this parcel of land, yes.
Okay, that was my understatement, but I wanted to confirm. So we're working with the 2016 zoning bylaws.
That's right.
Thank you. Okay, so the questions probably mostly from Mr. Buckland. Mr. Buckland, normally when we get an A&R, we get a peer review document, and we didn't get any comments on these from our engineer.
Normally, we don't do a peer review of the A&Rs.
I disagree, so I have multiple peer reviews from our previous consulting engineer for A&Rs. Okay, so we don't have one. That means some of my questions will be difficult. Okay, so with respect to this project, the site plan, special permit, and the subdivision, how do these A&Rs affect those documents or those agreements?
They don't affect them. All they do is change lot lines on the—on the property.
But those lot lines were established in either the subdivision plan or the site—site plan.
Well, in this case, one of the A&Rs is part of a special permit. There was a modification of the special permit that was issued that established the pro shop and the phase 4 development. And this—and part—as part of that special permit, it was, I believe, a condition that the—the property be split, subdivided, so that the pro shop was on a separate parcel of land.
I don't remember that. Do we have that artifact? Where—where—is that agreement? I don't remember, and that wasn't submitted with any of this material.
Yeah.
I don't remember that at all. I'm not saying it didn't happen, I just don't remember it. And we don't have an artifact that says that. What artifact should I look for that substantiates that?
It'd be the special permit that was issued for the project, for Phase 4.
Phase 4, okay, I'll go look for that. Next question. So it's for Phase 4, so the— so that the covenant for Phase 3 and the tripartite agreement covering Phase 2 are not affected by these changes?
No, they're not.
Okay. All right, and then the last—my last question, I have to go back and find the document you found, but that's—that's okay, is these are showing frontage on Starboard Drive in one of the plans, right?
One of the plans, yeah.
Is Starboard Drive an accepted way?
Uh, no, it's not an accepted way.
So how can we do an A&R for a way that's not accepted?
Because it was—it was approved as under a subdivision. You approved it as a—
I—I know we approved it as a subdivision, but the subdivision isn't complete, and I'm very uncomfortable changing lot lines when—
When the road doesn't technically exist.
When the road doesn't exist and the subdivision isn't complete. And the tripartite agreement is still outstanding for work incomplete. So I'm—I'm uncomfortable with that. So that's why I'm asking the questions.
Yeah, I understand. And I can't necessarily give you any comfort of one or the other.
Other than it's an acceptable approach.
Yes.
As your recommendation.
Being asked to approve an A&R on a road that doesn't technically exist.
That was—that was approved in a subdivision plan, which is then takes me back to why don't we have to reopen the subdivision plan?
Yeah, because wouldn't it be considered a modification?
That's what I'm thinking. It should be. You couldn't hear me?
No, he's yelling at me this time.
So I can't—this is—this is the plan we're looking at.
So it's this piece right here that's being carved out, carved down.
Yeah.
Well. So this—this—this piece is being created. But Starboard Drive is over here. It doesn't have followed down Starboard Drive.
So that's from Baypoint.
Right?
Yeah, but I—I know that's the confusion I'm having because I'm looking at this, it's talking about over here.
This is the project that we just looked at, right? This one.
That was Phase 4.
Yeah. And isn't this where the—
That's where the clubhouse sits.
Right, right.
And Ken says that we had a condition that this had to be carved out, which that's a part of the open.
I remember the clubhouse being there, but I don't remember it being carved out as a separate lot.
A condition—often look for that agreement, for that condition of approval. Mr. Chairman, through you to Jonathan, can you, when you get back to the office sometime this week, send out the conditions of approval for Phase 4, please? And we should note that that's included by reference to our discussion tonight. That's the document you're referring to, right?
That's correct, yes.
Be nice if we had that document here tonight.
Okay, well, let's—let's see where we go, because once we get into the specifics, I have questions specific—those were generic. And then I just wanted to go on record, and Attorney Rosa, these were questions that were raised in my email. I believe we still have an open issue. We had the fact that the tripartite agreement for Phase 1 expired without notice, and we no longer have a bond for that—for that phase, and the work is not complete. Let me—let me finish and then, if you want to respond. I am looking for a recorded copy of the covenant release for Phase 2 that excluded Phase 3.
This is the clubhouse.
Okay, so in September of 2022, well, actually, in April of 2021, we approved the tripartite agreement for Phases 2 and 3. We approved the tripartite agreement at that point. Unfortunately, the covenant had never been released. So in September of 2022, we—we did a partial release of the covenant for Phase 2, but excluded Starboard Drive and excluded Phase 3 Beacon. And that was supposed to be recorded. I just have been asking for a copy of that to see the wording, to see it was properly recorded. So Phase 1, we have a problem that the tripartite agreement expired without being extended, and the work is not complete. So the bond has lapsed, is my understanding from my discussions with Mr. Fay. I want to ensure that the covenant was properly released for Phase 2, but not Phase 3, and we have a tripartite agreement that was established in April of 2021. And for a note for the board, the tripartite agreement that we established in April of 2021, which technically only covers Phase 2, was for 28 months. That will expire in August of this year. And I suggest that we don't let it lapse without properly dealing with the extension. And then we're some other miscellaneous recording items, but those are—those are my concerns about keeping the project current and—and moving forward.
All right. The lapse of the bond is something that cannot happen without the town's approval. They will not call a bond unless the town signed off on it. So somewhere, and I—again, you've got a very large stack of paper, and I understand that there had to be an acquiescence by the town to release that bond.
Okay.
The bonding company would not do that.
I can't find it. And what—what Mr. Fay explained to me is he terminated his— I'm just saying what he explained—explained to me. He terminated his agreement with the bank, and the bond was gone. So I'm just trying to get it established if the bond— if what you said actually happened. I can't—I can't get the town to provide me a record of it, and I've asked Mr. Fay. But my opinion at the moment is that bond—the—the agreement lapsed without being extended, and the bond is gone. So if we could—if we could clear that up, I've been asking for over two years now, maybe not quite that long, for a long time, to try and just get that cleared up.
Okay, I'll be happy to look into that.
Thank you.
And also, just with the understanding is that what was done in Phase 1, you've never done a final inspection either.
Correct.
And we are—I'm here today on behalf of Baypoint to say to you, you do your final inspection, and if there's something that needs to be done, we're ready, willing, and able to do whatever you say needs to be done to clean that up. Bond or irrespective of the bond or not.
I—thank you, I appreciate that. We know the work isn't complete because the streetlights aren't done.
There's monuments, I think, missing as well.
Some monuments are missing, some driveway cuts. We could debate whether that's included or not. And the—and the sidewalk on Baypoint Drive to Onset is not completed yet.
And to that same extent, since I am here, and since it appears the inspection was not done, I'd like to use this form to request the final inspection so we can move this forward.
Great.
So that we're—
Perfect.
So we don't want to have to talk about this and go back through 400 reams of paper to try to find a piece of paper.
If we could get Phase 1 off the books—
We—we're in complete agreement with that, not an issue.
And then we don't worry about the bond as long as the work's done.
Exactly, it becomes a moot point.
Jonathan, you gonna set that up with our engineer?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And then—and then if you could record in your mind that the—
What you're looking for, the documents.
Well, but the new one is going to expire three months, and let's not let the tripartite agreement just go off into the fairyland without taking positive action.
I can assure you the bank won't let us let that lapse, so—
Good.
Since they still have—obviously have money out against.
I think those were my—they—they cover sort of both, the whole project. Ken answered most of my questions. And then Attorney Rosa has agreed to work with us. And as long as we capture those action items in the minutes, I think we can—we can move forward a specific discussion.
Are we going to have a timeline for getting a final inspection done and confirming that the bond is in place and—
That's good, establish—what—what do you think is reasonable?
I think, you know, the—the works, you know, from our perspective, we're not working anymore daily on that. So whenever you can have your inspectors or however you want to handle the inspection, we're ready to move forward now with it. I—you know, it's time to bring it to an end.
30 days?
30 days, then.
Jonathan, does that seem reasonable for the engineer?
I'll have to follow up tomorrow morning.
Okay, well, let's—let's set a timeline for 30 days. We have a meeting in two weeks. If the 30 days is no good—
I'll let you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead, when you're ready, I have— I'll just leave it open.
Okay, and you have—you have more for us?
Well, I'm—I thought you wanted to take a look at the plan. I mean, I—I do have one point to make is that there is no part of this Form A that is on Starboard Drive. It's all on Baypoint Drive, which has been accepted.
Yeah, we just looked at that.
I—I just—that we indicated it wasn't—it was on—
I—I was having a hard time looking at the very small—
They are very small, I would agree. I mean, it's—and to just—to follow up on one question you asked Mr. Buckland relative to the separation of the residential and the commercial piece. I don't recall off the top of my head whether it's included in the decision, but I did reach out to Town Council about it prior or in process of—of doing this, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Buckland or Town Council, but he indicated that there's various ways you could do it. Mr. Buckland suggested a minor modification. And I think, and Ken, you can back me up because I don't—I don't want to speak for you, that the Town Council was saying that an A&R option is an appropriate option as well. It doesn't have to be one or the other. There's various ways to—to slide that out. And I think it's very clear, or it was very clear to me, and hopefully to you, that this is exactly what happened with the other phases. It was once part of Baypoint. It comes out into a different entity. The different entity develops the units. The units are then sold to third parties. It's very clear that you didn't expect to have 56 owners of this little parcel of land with the new units on it. I mean, that was obviously part of the idea that this ultimately would be in someone else's name. So it's not a foreign concept that we're going to have a different owner for the residential piece than we have for the golf course.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a comment, and then I have a question. So again, we have representations from the town attorney from discussions that happened outside of— and we have no input, no input from town attorney advising us. I—I believe—I'm not questioning—
Again, Mr. Buckland was part of some of those conversations.
We got no advice from Town Council.
Right.
Okay, comment. Sir, on—am I looking at 323? Is this the third? Okay, just regarding— excuse me, regarding the planning board note number 1, the subdivision is under—this is why my questions about the covenant and the tripartite agreements came up. Says this subdivision is under a separate covenant to be recorded herewith. So that would be the covenant for Phase 4 then. Could we clarify that note? Because I didn't—I wasn't even looking for that. If I—if it had said—I was looking at the old covenants and agreements. So I didn't even look forward to the fourth phase. That would’ve—that—that just would have been helpful, and we would have avoided some of my questions. So this note, the covenant they're talking about is the Phase 4 covenant, which I don't know if I have a— Jonathan, if we have a copy of that recorded, could you send that as well, just for my records?
I—I don't believe a covenant has issued in that. I don't recall ever seeing one, to be honest with you.
Well, then, it's noting when—
That's why it says to be recorded herewith, I think, was that—the idea was that we would record the covenant as part of this transaction.
Okay, do we have such covenant documented and created?
I don't believe it's been created yet, that I'm aware of.
So—
Because it was—it was vacant land, there was no work being done.
No, 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 I'm—I'm a process kind of guy, so—
No, so I—I'm not aware of anything.
We have to create a Form F covenant as part of this process.
I would say that'd be appropriate, right?
Is that—is that needed?
That—that may not be needed because the Baypoint Drive is already under Phase 1.
Now we're going back to Phase 1, and I'm saying that appears that that tripartite agreement has expired, and we're—we're discussing that, and the bond doesn't exist. So what covenant are we referring to on this set of plans?
Right. That's a good question. As it refers to Phase 1 and his concern about the bond and the tripartite.
And it was modified—the Baypoint Drive, construction was modified with this Phase 4 decision as well.
But we don't have—you're just saying we don't have a Phase 4 covenant. So I want to know what covenant we're referring to on this document.
Well, we should have a Phase 4 covenant then, in this case, sounds like.
Should that be—should we have a copy of that before acting on that?
Yeah, it makes sense.
I think so, too. So—so what are we missing? We're missing confirmation that—that the tripartite agreement and bond aren't, in fact, delinquent.
Right.
We're missing—
We need the inspection to close out Phase 1.
Right, and then we need a—a Phase 4 covenant created.
Right.
Okay.
And I—I would think we have the same issue on the—the next set of plans.
The other one is Fronton Onset Avenue. I don't think there's any issues with that.
Oh, okay.
And—and the others, my—my suggestion would be, because—
Because it—it does—on that other plan, it makes a reference to a covenant.
That would have been the original covenant, possibly.
Let's go—when we—let's open for, and we'll figure out what covenant that is.
And—and this one, it would be my suggestion, since we have been working on this, is that you could look at this. You'll vote on it on the merits, which does it comply with the A&R standard, which it clearly does, it has sufficient frontage, it has sufficient acreage. And that you would—you would approve it subject to obtaining the Phase 4 covenant to the board's satisfaction. That would be a half step either way, if you will, that we'll—we'll get that to you, and you—it's—it's not approved until that's done. And then we could just move forward without the need for another public hearing and another—another delay. Because I mean, that was just very simple to draw, obviously, so—
You can discuss that with the board. My—my feeling is we're very poor at following up on open items.
Yeah, I agree. And, you know, the whole point—the whole point behind my email to the office about the documents that Tim—I thought was going to be Tim coming tonight without was to kind of help you prepare so that you didn't come on our—
Well, I don't think the thought of a Phase 4 covenant ever entered into our—our conversation because no work's being proposed under Phase 4. All the road work that's—that is necessary for Phase 4 to occur is incorporated into a—another phase, and there's a bond out for that.
Is that Phase 1? That's the one—
It's Phase—it's really the—the one that Rockland Trust has that's going to expire in August.
Right.
Because that incorporates those—those changes to Phase 1 into it as well, that they—they piggybacked on top of the Phase 1 covenant.
This is a very complicated set of—
And there's money for that, and there's—the—and it's required. I mean, you have coverage for the road work that needs— I mean, you have coverage for the roadwork that needs to occur in order for Phase 3 or 4 to happen. That's covered by a covenant, in place.
Phase 2 and 3.
Phase 2 and 3, I'm sorry.
There's no covenant, there's no bond for Phase 3, that's another problem. I don't believe there's any bond for Phase 3. The tripartite agreement established a million some odd dollars, but that only covers Phase 2.
That's correct.
And so we have no bond for Phase 3, is that correct also?
That's correct, yeah.
That's another problem.
But no work is being done on Phase 3.
I don't know, is Beacon, they haven't started Beacon, Beacon something or other, Beacon Drive, Beacon.
Well, they could have started it with the amount of work that they're doing around there, but it doesn't, it isn't ready for building permits on the, on the houses around that street.
Right. So this is a very convoluted set of plans and documents going all the way back to 2016. I'm trying to keep up with it, which is why I appreciate your patience with my questions. But there is no bond, as far as I know, for the work on Beacon Drive.
Oh, there's definitely a bond for the work on Beacon Drive.
I, we have to get that cleared up.
The tri-party agreement covers that.
No, it's not, that's what I'm saying. We excluded, when we did the covenant release, for the covenant that covered Phase 2 and Phase 3 in September of 2022, it was a partial release that specifically excluded Beacon Drive.
But the tri-party agreement that Rockland Trust issued includes work on Beacon Drive. It would have to, that's part of their collateral, they would have never allowed a tri-party agreement to go forward on that.
That's not the agreements we have in place.
Okay, I, I mean, I helped write that tri-party agreement, I think it covers it, but I'm happy to look at it.
I read, I read the tripartite agreement.
You'll have to get a copy of that.
Yeah, I don't have it with me unfortunately, but I do clearly have it at the office.
Because the covenant, we have not released the covenant for Phase 3. Therefore, the tripartite agreement can't subsume that, as far as I know. I brought all this up at the time, I mean, this is, I've continually raised these questions.
Clearly, Rockland Trust would have, since they're posting the money for that.
But unfortunately, I didn't talk to anyone.
Maybe the introduction that may not have been correct, and again, I did help write that, so I'm, it was clearly intended to cover Beacon Drive, because that's part of the collateral for the loan that they've made that they're building.
This is my problem with this whole project, is, we don't have control over, we attempt to establish documentation. So we should look at the covenant release, I don't believe we released the covenant for Phase 3, and we specifically excluded Beacon Drive from the covenant release. And this was all in September of 2022, and December, excuse me, October.
But if you only partially released the covenant for one section, the other, the covenant remains as to the other.
Right, and there was no bond associated with that covenant.
It's an either or, if you have a bond, you don't need a covenant, or if you have a covenant, you don't need a bond.
Well, that's what I meant, so there's no, there's no bond, is what I'm saying, for the work.
That may be the case, but you do have a covenant.
Yes, we do have, I'm sorry, I'm being imprecise, I thank you. We have a covenant, I believe, but no bond.
Okay, all right, that makes a little more sense, as much as any of this makes, understanding of that.
And please accept my confusion.
Every time we have a meeting, something else changes, it's difficult to stay up with it.
Okay, so I don't know if somebody wants to try and summarize where we're at. I agree that this A&R meets the frontage requirements, I agree that this A&R has the lot size requirement. I think the note on the Mylar needs to be.
Once we, once we figure out the covenants, I think.
Right, yes.
It needs to be adjusted, I would agree.
And we have to, I think we've established, Ken, that we need to write a covenant for Phase 4 that covers this work.
Yeah, that covers the additional work that was identified in the Phase 4 special permit.
And then we cover this, the work on this A&R, and we'd be all good on that then.
That's right.
So at which point, we do, we act, we don't act on this at all?
Well, Attorney Rosa asked us to have a conditional.
Approve it with condition.
What would be the advantage to you of a conditional approval?
To be perfectly honest with you, very frank, is if we do it that way, it's approved provided we do what we agree to tonight. It doesn't, if you decide to take this plan home one night and spend another two hours and you find four other conditions, I'm then subject to that review that I don't want to be, to be perfectly honest with you, I mean, it's, you know, we've given you the plans, the planning boards have looked at it, they work, and we want to be comfortable that if we do, if we get the covenant squared away, which is reasonable, then we know we've got an approval, we can move forward. That's my reason for that.
Okay.
To bring some finality to this, for everybody.
Finality, that would be very welcome, to be honest with you. I'd love to see this project finished and down the road.
And on the other one, which again has no work involving any of these covenants, it's on a, you know, a public way, a real public way, if you will, Onset Avenue, that would be, it's very important for us to get that approved. We've got sales pending on those two lots once they're approved, and that, the time constraints there make a, make a real problem for us, to be, I'll be very honest with you, is it's taken longer than it should have, and I'm not blaming anybody in this room, it's probably my fault, but the fact of the matter is, we need to get that one moving forward because there's a, and that's been subdivided three or four times.
That's the next one, we'll, I have questions about that.
Why we're talking about, you know, what you're gonna approve or not approve, that would be, I wanted to raise that.
I've asked my questions, I'm as confused as.
I am too. Completely confused, to be honest with you.
Well, I think I understand, we have a lot of work to do on covenants and tripartite agreements and bonds and.
Yeah, but do we, do we continue to accommodate requests when we continually are missing documents?
That's the board, we can make a motion to deny, we can make a motion to continue, excuse me, we can make a motion to deny, we can make a motion to continue, or we could approve conditionally. I think those are our three.
Those actually aren't your options, but since it's an A&R, but what you can do is say that the, either that you can endorse the A&R because it has the frontage on a way that was, that was approved by the planning board, or you can say that the way is not defined because it doesn't have a covenant in place, or I think it's the covenant not being in place is what makes it unavailable for, for A&R subdivisions and requires a modification of the subdivision instead.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that actually sounds like the board can approve it. The board cannot approve it.
That's the way I'm leaving it. I'm uncomfortable acting on any of this with so much documentation missing.
I think as we've promised so many things for so many years now.
Yeah.
We don't get this.
We don't get it, and that comment's not directed at you. That comment's directed at, at the proponent that continually arrives at these meetings without information.
Or not.
Though I think some of the blame, and again, lies with the fact that your office apparently doesn't follow up on things as well, I mean, this is a two-way street here, and, you know, and we're being, we're being punished, if you will, and we've done things wrong, I'm not, for, you know, some things slipping through the cracks it shouldn't have, and the last comment that Mr. Buckland made about it, you can approve it, but the A&R isn't done, you need a minor modification, just flies in the face of what Town Council said, I mean, that, of all the options, that was, that was the one that I think does have available.
He probably.
If you continue with this one thing.
He probably was, he's not, I'm continually frustrated that Town Council's not here to hear the discussion and respond in real time. It is what it is, so he can't, he doesn't benefit, he probably didn't know anything about my questions about the covenant.
As I said, if those are our options, I'm very happy with you to continue this one, till we get the documentation on this piece, and then look at the other pieces as a separate piece. That way you haven't lost anything, it's still open, you can ask all your questions, you get your documents, you can vote on it, if you don't get your documents, you don't vote on it. It seems to me a more efficient use of everybody's time.
Can we do the covenant without reopening the subdivision?
Yes, you can. Covenant is something that is, follows the approval of the subdivision road.
Okay, okay. We're just still gathering, I don't know what the path forward should be.
Well, I think the, let's start, let's separate them first. So the, the, splitting the property and splitting off the clubhouse from the main piece, which is on Baypoint Drive. What's our concern with that one? And only that one?
Concern is still what covenant.
What covenant does this refer to?
And what covenant covers the work, and we do have an outstanding request from Jonathan to just get the conditions of approval, so that we have that for our, to refresh our memories of what we discussed on Phase 4. And then, and then. Okay, so I have a similar question, I believe, for Onset Avenue.
Same thing.
Yeah, so if you look at Onset Avenue, it has the same statement that it's under a covenant to be recorded here with, which covenant? Note 1 says, and this is what continues to confuse me, so what subdivision plan covers the properties on Onset Ave?
On that side of.
I'm not sure that any of them did, because there was no work contemplated, they were, they were on a subdivision plan prior to them even, my client even acquiring title to it.
Okay.
And I'm not sure that that was even part of the consideration of the board when they looked at that, the original master plan, if you will, that those lots on Onset Avenue had any real bearing on what you were, what you were proving, and that's, and you were here probably kind of.
They actually weren't, they were just separate parcels of land.
Right, they were on a separate subdivision plan.
Which is fine, which.
There's at least, there's been at least four rebirths of those lots.
And that's, that's fine, I can understand that, but there's a reference.
Yeah, no, I understand your plan reference issue, okay, that is something we can easily, you know, and I guess the question is, do you need a covenant for it, given what you're gonna be doing?
Well, I mean, you reference in the covenant.
Well, again, that.
If it's not needed, why is, why is the reference?
Well, that's the engineer and maybe me not having a disconnect, I mean, as, as we're both having disconnects about covenant.
All right, so I would say for both of these, I would just defer until we get the question on the covenant answered, as to what it is we're, we're worried about.
Or if it's needed.
Or if it's even needed.
I have the decision for Phase 4 here, and the conditions included that the streetlights should be placed at signed, named intersections, and sidewalks shall run on one side of Baypoint Drive continuously from Onset Avenue to the property boundary on Cahoon Street. And that this decision should be filed on the county registry of deeds. I think the streetlights and the sidewalk modify the subdivision approval of Baypoint Drive.
But there's no, you didn't read a condition that says we were gonna parcel off?
No, no condition I'm parceling that off.
Which, he said to what? All right, so it's not a condition, but it may make sense, as Attorney Rosa said.
Right.
It's consistent with the other phases that you approved.
So then I guess the only question then is just the covenant.
If we accept that we're gonna parcel that off, it wasn't a condition of approval for Phase 4, as previously stated.
So we just, do we need?
It was discussed with Town Council and.
Again, we have another set of discussions that happened outside the board with Town Council that we didn't have the benefit of.
Right, no brief, no nothing.
This continually happens to us. Okay.
Let's do this, let's kick the ball back into Town Council's court, seeing how Rich and you and Attorney Rosa also have pretty good rapport with one another.
How about we get something in writing from him?
That's, that's what I'm saying, is let's, let's defer this to the next meeting.
I met with Town Council on it.
Yeah, and we have nothing to back it up.
If that's what we're dealing with.
When Carl comes back, I'll entertain a motion to put this off to the next meeting, pending some clarification from Town Council on the discussions that took place, so that we can make sure that we're acting on this appropriately. Okay, I would entertain a motion that we continue this, both.
Vote.
Both 3-23 Baypoint Club LLC A&R and 4-23 Baypoint Club LLC A&R to be continued to the next regularly scheduled planning board meeting of 5:22, pursuant to us receiving some clarification from Town Council on the discussions that took place between Attorney Rosa, Ken, and himself, and how, and a detailed list of how we should move forward with these.
In addition to any clarification Attorney Rosa can come up with on covenants that.
The covenants.
That are relevant to both of these plans.
Right, understood.
And I agree, I think you're right, the second one probably doesn't require a covenant.
There's no work.
Yeah, no, I, I think I agree with you, and.
Let's encourage it.
Well, no, I opened by saying I appreciate your acceptance of my confusion because the path to getting here was not straightforward.
It's ugly, yeah. So moved, so moved, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste, A&R, all in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I, anything you can bring to the table to clarify this material would be very helpful.
Yeah, we would love to move this forward.
And we're still gonna, we're still gonna act on your request to do inspections for Phase 1, right?
Yes, yes, we still want to move forward on that, because that.
Hold up, anything that might occur the next meeting.
Okay, I'm gonna skip ahead, pass item 5 in preliminary business, and continue on to public hearings, 5-23 Dos Amigos Real TLLC, lots 1010A3 and 1010D on map 74, two lot subdivision. We haven't closed this public hearing, right, Ken?
Yes.
Yes.
This is a new application.
All right, so I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for 5-23 Dos Amigos.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Sherri Quirk, all in favor, Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Do, procedural question, I think we need to read the, the public hearing into the record, the public hearing notice. You don't have it.
I don't have one.
I, I move that we forego reading of the public hearing notice into the record.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Mike Baptiste, all in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Mr. Chair, a procedural question.
Yes.
Through you to Mr. Buckland. Mr. Buckland, I know that when we deny a special permit, there's a two-year, you can't reapply for two years. Does the same apply to subdivisions?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, so this, we can reopen this with no prejudice?
That's correct, you don't have to find, there's something changed.
Okay.
Good deal. Welcome.
Welcome, good evening. I'm Brad Batoll with JC Engineering, with me tonight is John Churchill of JC Engineering. We have before you tonight to request approval for a two lot subdivision. As this board is aware, this project was previously presented to the town, and back in, I believe, February of this year, there was a motion to approve this sub, project subject to a condition that the utility poles are accepted by the utility company, Eversource, prior to any. company, Eversource, prior to any work. That motion did not pass by a two to three vote. Since that timeframe, we have moved forward with Eversource, we have a recorded document for the easement, we have made payment to Eversource. And that appeared to be the only outstanding issue as part of the subdivision. It was previously reviewed by your engineer and consultant. Your revised set of plans was submitted back in October. Those are the same plans that we're presenting tonight and have submitted. It is a small two lot subdivision on a roadway. Proposed pavement width is eighteen feet with a hammerhead turnaround at the end. Fire department had previously approved the swept analysis, so there should be no questions on that. The drainage involves swale along the side of the roadway that discharges into a drainage basin at the, the bottom of the cul-de-sac. This is a two lot subdivision, it's not subject to stormwater management policy, but we did provide stormwater management controls because of eighteen feet wide pavement width and the length is, it's under, under a thousand feet, but it's enough to warrant the need to put in a drainage basin. We have before you to request permission, request approval on this. As was originally presented at the last project, there were a number of waivers that we had requested, including a waiver from installing street trees, streetlights, sidewalks, waiver from installing Cape, concrete curbing on both sides of the road. We're proposing a Cape Cod berm on one side. The other side is a grassed swale, so it's a super elevated roadway. We're, we're asking for a waiver from the turnaround requirement, from providing a radius with a sixty foot diameter. Due to this being a two lot subdivision, we propose a hammerhead, enough access for the fire department to make their maneuver to turn around. And the, the last waiver involves connection to town sewer approximately eleven hundred feet from, from, I mean, town water, approximately eleven hundred feet from the, the last connection down a, you know, down the existing roadway on Squirrel Island. If I may, John Churchill, basically, these are the same exact plans that were approved, were reviewed by the engineer and, and I believe the only sticking point, if I recall, was the easement, the public poles, making the Squirrel Island public poles, which we spent a lot of effort doing. I have a canceled check, which then triggered the easement that I believe I saw a couple of the members have that, if not, I have the recorded easement. So right, as of right now, there is a recorded easement. If I may, Mr. King, approach the, approach the bench? Okay. So what I produced there is the canceled check showing that Eversource was paid and then the easement actually of all thirteen homeowners along Squirrel Island Road. So basically, it's in Eversource's hands now. They're going to come out, rela, renumber those poles so they know what poles in accordance with their system. And any homeowner, any homeowner as of that easement being recorded can call if their electricity goes out on that road. So we took care of that, and I believe there was, Mr. Buckland had a draft covenant, he had a draft, I believe it was in a draft form as well as the conditions of the approval. So I believe it is an approval project. I believe we have met what the board was hopefully looking for from us at this point. And I think that if there's any other questions, I think I'm more than happy to answer them, but I think this has been vetted pretty, pretty well from previous hearings.
My only question is not for the applicant. I think everything the applicant said is accurate, that we were pretty supportive, but what I don't remember is what the conditions are. Ken, when did you send that draft decision and covenant documents out? I just have to go back through my notes.
I must have been back to that when we last heard the, the application.
I think we should probably bring that forward, not, not, I mean, I don't, and, and bring the covenant forward so we can keep that on track, but that's, that's my only question. And this is a public hearing. My, my only other question would be to one of the vocal citizens to see if Mr. Lentola has any comments. He's here when it, when it's his turn, but that would be my only, if, he's been the, one of the most vocal citizen commenters.
Hate that. I don't see a copy of the covenant in the file. Questions, comments?
I, I am awaiting, as others are, the, any comments from the public.
From the public? Mike?
I'm happy, there's going to be light.
There's going to be light, yeah. And when it goes out, there'll be somebody to call. All right, perfect. Thank you very much, we're going to open it up to the public now. Is there anybody present who would like to speak to this?
Eric Lentola, fifteen Squirrel Island Road, West Wareham. It's been over nine years that we've been dealing with this issue and the residents, we've, we've all talked about this, discussed this over a long period of time. We've signed on to this plan, everybody's in agreement on the street. In one way, it's unfortunate it's fallen into Mr. Churchill's hands, but this is the only way we can get this done. And we do appreciate what you're doing and helping to solve this problem for us. And everybody's wanting to get this to go forward, so there's, no one has any issues or anything with this project, so we're all on board.
Pleasure. All right, awesome, that's good to hear.
Yeah.
It's nice to hear a, a neighbor and a developer.
It's nice to meet you too. Thanks, Brad.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to comment? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on, I have the glasses, five dash twenty-three Dos Amigos Realty LLC, lots ten, ten, A three and ten, ten, D on map seventy-four, two lot subdivision.
Before we close, close the public hearing, because we can't take, Ken, do you, can you read into the record your draft decision document? Is it still appropriate?
I was looking it up and see if I could find it.
I have a copy that was emailed back when.
If you want to read it into the, where Ken can read it to the record, whoever.
It would just, I would think that the only concerning doc, statements that need to be stated is the, the list of waivers, which you can read directly from this list.
And what's the date on that document? That's awesome.
It's in draft form at this time, it was prepared in anticipation of a vote on February twenty-eighth.
Okay.
So it only involves the public hearings involved with the prior application. A new document's going to have to be revised to include the new public hearing, the new dates, the plan is the same, so.
That's fine, is, is there anything in there, Ken, that we need to memorialize?
Just the waivers from installing water mains, providing streetlights, providing street trees, providing sidewalks, providing concrete curbing, providing fire alarms, and waiver for the turnaround design.
So everything that you've, you've read in for us already?
I don't remember anything else.
I, I don't either.
Okay, so now.
You can give, take another swing at this?
Well, yeah, we write, we got that, we can't take testimony if we close the public hearing, so we, we were able to do that.
I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
The public is.
Oh, I, I had already asked for somebody to weigh in, did you not hear me?
She's not concerned with this.
Yes, we haven't closed public hearing yet, Annie, so you can speak.
Good evening, Annie Hayes, Farmer's Lane. I've said this once before, but I, I feel like I need to say it repeatedly. I would hope that as a developer, Mr. Churchill, you were the developer, hi.
Hi.
That you would leave as much vegetation and trees as possible. I know it's more convenient for you to clear cut a, a site, but we're losing so many trees from clear cutting by developers. I hope you would consider that.
We always consider, we, we have to cut enough trees so that the trees don't fall in the house.
I understand that, thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Is there anybody else? Okay, third time's the charm. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing on five twenty-three Dos Amigos.
So moved. The third time.
Second, we have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now I would entertain a motion to approve the plans as submitted with the understanding that the concern over Eversource and taking the poles has been resolved and the.
Did you grant the waivers?
The waivers, thank you, the word was escaping me.
And that the covenant be filed as well?
Grant the waivers as requested and that the covenant be prepared?
Yeah, prepared and filed.
Okay. Do we have said motion?
So moved. Second.
Mike, you're busy tonight.
Second.
I said, you're busy tonight, all these seconds. We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste, all in favor, Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Good.
Jane?
Epstein?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yep, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for following through on the Eversource.
We're trying, it took two years for us to get that done.
Things move slow with that company.
We've been waiting a long time.
Yes, we are, they waited nine years, but I, I helped them out two years ago, till now.
Okay. Who want to attack next?
My recommendation is, is that the large members of the audience are probably most interested.
In the design guidelines?
In the design guidelines for downtown as opposed to my update on Articles fourteen and fifteen.
You don't want to hear about Articles in fourteen or fifteen?
They, they will materially affect what you're going to get, so they affect the downtown, so, but that's okay.
So I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the proposed adding desired guidelines in the W V one R district to the planning board rules and regulations. Do we have a second? Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste, all in favor, Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Let's light the candle.
Do we need to read the public hearing notice into the record? And if you don't have a copy, I'll make a motion to waive the reading.
I have it.
Good.
Notice of public hearing, the Wareham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on May eighth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. in room three twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. oh two five seven one, on the desired guidelines and performance standards and procedures for design review for all W V one sub-districts with a possible vote to include the design guidelines and performance standards and review procedures for the W V one sub-district within the rules and regulations of the planning board. So read. Michael King, Chair.
Shouldn't it be the W V one R district? Did we, did we have the proper notice?
Do we have a proper notice, Jonathan? Did we leave an R out in this notice?
The correct designation is W V one R.
Good bless you.
It's up to you, hang on, this is.
Well.
We have clearly, the folks in the audience.
Right.
Knew what we were going to talk about.
Yep, and the, the posted agenda for the planning board does say.
Right.
W V one R. So I think we will, we'll accept this as a scriptener's error and move forward. Okay. Where do we start?
I have a couple of slides I was going to go through. Yeah, can you have me in and can I share my screen?
Wait, who gets this? It'll have to go to Jonathan.
We can open them. Do you think they open?
For many people to open one.
Remember, Mike, everybody can put that up, you gotta put it down.
Good job.
What? Remember, you can put that up, you better put it down.
Okay, when they took two people last time. When they fix the air conditioning, then they can hold me responsible. So then they're on their own. I'm pretty sure we took a vote last year, didn't we? To have air conditioning in here by this year.
Installed central air.
Yeah, you sent me the invite again. Yeah, I got that one.
No, this is my car.
The stuff down there is mine.
Where? It's all set. I brought the saw with me. Of the what? What do you need? I got duplicates of almost everything.
There it goes, all right. So these are mostly notes to me so I can keep a track of what I'm supposed to say. Just wanted to go over what was design review, what was needed to properly do it, and what are the design review standards that are being proposed for the village, the W V one R district. Typically, design review is administered by an independent impartial board committee. It deals with architectural and design features of buildings and landscaping in public spaces. The public realm, everything you can see from the street or from public spaces. It occurs during the permitting process and it may regulate the materials' color, style, roof, open space, height, symmetry of windows, doors, et cetera. Typical things that you think of as part of a design review. But it is not an attempt to design a project, we leave that up to the, the designers. It is not an attempt to regulate the use. It's really something that we look to see compatibility with community standards. It, it helps promote a dialogue and, and negotiation with the developers and the designers when they come through for site plan review. Typically, there are public amenities and that are included in the, in the design review that are considered open spaces, the amenities are to activate those public spaces. And there may be incentives with bonuses such as higher four ratio, area ratio, or in this case, additional height if the, if the public benefits are, are as great as they should be. And that's something that the board makes as, as the sole arbiter of. amenities and the public realm, and requiring the inclusion of amenities and listing the priorities which are public access to the waterfront. That includes physical and visual access, active uses on Main Street, off the sidewalk, landscaping and site furniture on Main Street and the waterfront, and special standards for increase in height. Additional performance standards would be the dark sky lighting compliance and enclosure of utilities and waste disposal, and stormwater compliance. Essentially, the properties on Main Street don't have a backside since there's access on the Merchant's Way side as well. There is no backside of the properties. Everything's a front and is visible to the public, so we have to have standards that apply to all sides. So that's the alternative one, looking at public amenities and what's seen from the street. The second alternative is something that's been discussed with previously by having village districts and commercial districts standards and guidelines under zoning bylaws under Section 720 and 760, for 760 for commercial districts and 720 for onset village districts. The same standards and guidelines under either of those options could be used since those have already been adopted by the town for our commercial districts. The third alternative is where it's all new, where we focus on context is one of the options, where you... It requires a comparison with the adjacent buildings and open spaces, and you consider specific elements of design such as height proportions, shape, landscape, scale, directional expression, architectural inside details, and signs, and you have additional performance standards which are the same as the other performance standards we talked about. But in this instance, the design standards are something that asks for a relationship between the buildings, the new buildings and the existing buildings that are on the ground already. That doesn't mean that they have to be exactly the same, looking the same, but they relate to the adjacent buildings. That doesn't mean they have to be the same height. What you want in a town center is something that identifies it as a town center, which means quality open spaces and buildings of three to five stories in height. So these are the alternatives that I was recommending you consider. Drafting so that it's based on the public amenities, using the existing design guidelines in the zoning bylaw, or coming up with something that compares nearby buildings with and open spaces with the proposed development. So the designer would have to come in and talk about the context of the building being within the district and how it fits in with the adjacent development. There are also standards for the height increase as well, too, and we can go over those as well, too, but I think in this case it's that we're looking at varied heights of buildings is to be encouraged across the street line, not all the same height, but to have a variation in heights, and as I said, to have something that is a building standard of substantial size so that it provides the density that allows the development to be worthwhile so that the market is there to invest and make the improvements, and that the site plan review authority can deny the increases when the discrepancies are too great, whether the transitions are too abrupt, or that a canyon effect will be where buildings appear to be looming over the street will not be considered in harmony with the surrounding So that is the sum of what I'm recommending you consider for design guidelines at this time. Any questions?
When you're done, I'm confused, so I agree with what you presented, but I didn't think that's all we were discussing tonight. I thought we were discussing rules and regulations for the WV... That was the motion that was made, and that was what was attached to the minutes, which was rules and regs, all consistent with this, but not... So I'm confused as to why.
Well, the focus of those rules and regulations is the design guidelines.
Okay, but we need to review the rules and regulations in a public hearing so they can be adopted.
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm okay with everything you said. I just want to make sure I know what we're doing.
So it was my understanding that we're looking for a jump off point for rules and regs for the design guidelines?
Is that what this was intended to be?
That's what I'm anticipating it as, and we can certainly adopt it as that as a board.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm keeping up with the board because I...
Unless am I missing something?
No, I think that's right on target. I mean, we're looking to put together design guidelines that go in the rules and regulations for this new overlay district.
So rather than leaving it open-ended to interpretation, we're looking to put together a base point to start.
But we need to publicly review the document, and what I was... I guess what confused me is one of the options presented above was making changes to other sections of the bylaws that were...
I think that the intent was to draw from those two sections that are in the bylaws and use some of that language, basically the outline of what's in those two sections, to put into the rules and regulations for this new overlay district.
That's correct.
The issue that we've got right now is that we've just adopted a new overlay district, and we want to get design guidelines in place that would be applicable to any project that came to that new overlay district. So we're looking...
Or at least get a base.
Right. I personally see the design guidelines as being something that wants to be dynamic, not static. We don't set them and forget them.
Right, living document.
And so we've got to start somewhere, and we probably want to do it fairly quickly because we've got this overlay district in place and no design guidelines to go with it. So the thinking, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, is to get something in place to start with.
Yes, but I thought those were rules and regulations, which...
Correct, but they're just drawing the language from those bylaw sections. They're not becoming part of the bylaws. That may be where the confusion is. There were two sections in the bylaw that Ken referred to.
Yes.
And I think that that was just a matter of borrowing the language from them to put in the rules and regulations so that we've got something in place. I have some comments about that idea.
No, no, yeah. All right, so I'm not sure... I know the process for adopting rules and regulations. I don't know a process for adopting design guidelines. The process for adopting rules and regulations is to post the rules and regulations, hold a public hearing, and then the planning board votes to either to adopt. I don't know...
And why might that be different with design guidelines that go into the rules and regulations?
Yeah, it's just a subject. Just a subject within. I don't see the difference.
Okay, as long as that's what the intent is. I'm just...
That's my understanding of the intent.
So you have some thoughts on...
Well, my thoughts on the option of adopting those two, either one or parts from both of those two sections of the bylaw to put into these rules and regulations for the WV1R district. I think that they may not be entirely applicable. I think that we could take them, use them as reference in a general sense, but I think that the scale of what wants to happen in Onset Village and what wants to happen in the commercial districts is different from what wants to happen in Wareham Village, and I think that there are some fine tuning that would need to happen for it to be applicable to Wareham Village. I think they're not interchangeable, really.
I agree.
Particularly with this potential for height bonus, if you will, that that is absolutely not the case in Onset Village, but we need to pay attention to that and respond to that possibility of that height increase. So I think that we can draw from the basic structure of those two sets of guidelines, but I would not adopt either one of them wholesale.
So do you want to start? I mean, out of all of it, I think 720 Onset Village has the most usable content, that we can at least start with that and edit it appropriately? I mean, I agree with you. We have to put something in place so that someone doesn't fly into town and take advantage of the fact that we're not prepared.
Right, well, there was a draft put together of potential guidelines, and it is absolutely a work in progress. I mean, you can see my notes on it. It's kind of marked up with lots of suggestions and comments, because I think that this warrants a group of people getting together and determining what the intent is here and how you achieve that intent, and that's a complex thing to do successfully. But I understand that we've got a bit of a time crunch to get an initial set out, and but I think that this is something that needs to happen at sort of a committee level and then bring something to this board. It's hard to...
Well, would you think that a committee level would be responsible for the fine tuning aspect of it, not what we're trying to accomplish right out of the gate, which is put something in place to protect us?
Maybe, maybe not. I mean, we've got this, which is, I think, a little too vague, and that's why all my blue notes all over this. I think that we want to get a little bit closer. There was discussion about a group of people getting together and talking through this, and I think that's what it takes, and come to the board with something that the board and hearing can react to. May I ask a question? What's the timing that we're concerned about in terms of an applicant being able to come in without the design guidelines or rules and regulations in place? Ken, do you want to field that one?
It takes a while for any kind of project to be designed and prepared, and we're probably at least four months out before we see something come under the bylaw at this time. Probably six months, actually, for any size development. So we have some time to work on this, but the sooner we have it in place, the better because the designers can then consider that when they're designing their projects.
Well, I say, if they don't come in, if they walk into your office tomorrow with a proposed project, does it fall under what we have now, which is nothing, or next to nothing? Or do we actually have time? Because I'm reading what Jane has here, which is far more comprehensive than what's up there. I mean, I would feel better having something like this in place, even if it's not perfect, at least it's sitting there in place as a placeholder, and then we put together a committee to help us find...
Well, I think that that was put together with this new overlay district, WV1R, absolutely in mind, and I think that we could go back and go through the two sections of the bylaw and sort of check and make sure we didn't miss any bases in this, but I think that that's really focused on Wareham Village, which I think is a good thing.
Yeah, the one that we published April 20th is a design review document for rules and regulations of the Wareham Planning Board for applications to the planning board in the WV1R revitalization district. It goes through application forms, filing requirements, application materials, disposition, and then it goes into the performance standards and design guidelines.
Maybe, maybe, maybe not. I mean, we've got this, which is, I think, a little too vague, and that's why all my blue notes all over this. I think that we want to get a little bit closer. So, there's a...there was discussion about a group of people getting together and talking through this, and I think that's what it takes, and come to the board with something that the board and a hearing can react to.
May I ask a question? What's the timing that we're concerned about in terms of an applicant being able to come in without the design guidelines or rules and regulations in place?
Ken, do you want to...do you want to field that one?
It takes a while for any kind of project to be designed and prepared, and we're probably at least four months out before we see something come under the bylaw at this time. Probably six months, actually, for any size development. So, we have some time to work on this, but the sooner we have it in place, the better, because the designers can then consider that when they're designing their projects.
Well, I say, if they don't come in, if they walk into your office tomorrow with a proposed project, does it fall under what we have now, which is nothing, or next to nothing? Or do we actually have time? Because I'm reading what Jane has here, which is far more comprehensive than what's up there. I mean, I would feel better having something like this in place, even if it's not perfect, at least it's sitting there in place as a placeholder, and then we put together a committee to help us fine tune it.
Well, I think that that was put together with this new overlay district, WV1R, absolutely in mind. And I think that we could go back and go through the two sections of the bylaw and sort of check and make sure we didn't miss any bases in this. But I think that that's really focused on Wareham Village, which I think is a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the one that we published, April 20th, is a design review document for rules and regulations of the Wareham Planning Board. For applications to the planning board in the WV1R revitalization district. It goes through application forms, filing requirements, application materials, disposition, and then it goes into the performance standards and design guidelines.
No, no, I'm with you now. I'm confused.
Well, I mean, we have the... I'm sorry.
We have the document up there. It's been presented.
No, no, that's not what has to be approved at the public hearing. The exact wording of the rules and regulations have to be presented to the public.
Which we don't have.
We do.
When?
It was attached to the meeting minutes, or the meeting agenda. That's why I'm confused.
I take it, Jane, your advice is that that document needs more work in order to make it as complete as it needs to be, even as an initial foray?
I have it. Do you want me to show you?
I just found it.
That's my contention.
This is the one you're talking about.
And that it needs some time with a...
That's what I thought we were reviewing tonight.
A finite group of people sitting at a table, having a back-and-forth conversation to really put something meaningful together.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Peter Tittlebaum.
Please.
You've noticed a public hearing to try to get citizen input.
We haven't got to that point yet, Peter.
I understand that, but I think what you might want to do is take some of that input from people, understand what their concerns are, what they're here to say, and I may not agree with half of them, but you've got a bunch of people here who would like to...
I think that makes sense.
Participate, not just in the review and comment on something that's up on the screen. They'd like to participate in the drafting process. They'd like to say what they think are important values here.
I think that makes sense.
Some people might be interested in aesthetics. Some people might be interested in making sure there's spaces for businesses.
I have no doubt that they're going to have fabulous comments for us.
Yeah.
But until we get to the point that we know what we're here working on, which we're still working at, it doesn't make any sense. Once we get to the point that we know the document that we're really working on, I'm going to invite every single one of these people to talk to us.
I'm just trying to save you some work, because somebody might come up with a genius idea that you want to throw in the document and then put it up for...
Well, we're not going to approve this now.
No, I understand that.
Okay, so...
But it's just, we have all these people here.
I'm here, too.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the audience and to Mr. Tittlebaum, I, again, because I thought we were working on rules and regulations. It's important to understand what rules and regulations are. A bylaw, as you may went through at the town, has to be approved at town meeting, and it's a very formal process. Rules and regulations that are adopted by the planning board merely have to go through, I don't mean merely, go through a public hearing process, such as I thought we were starting tonight, but can be modified every week. The goal I thought we were starting with was because we approved a bylaw two weeks ago, or whatever, that we're now, we have no rules and regulations in place at all. So, I thought the planning board was hoping to get a stake in the ground, so we didn't have, we didn't have nothing. We didn't have nothing. I think that was a double negative.
That works. That works, in that instance.
So that we had something in place, but that document, because it doesn't need to go through the rigors of town meeting, can be continually improved.
Right, we need a starting point.
And we were trying to get a starting point in place, so that no applicant came in, we didn't have something on the board. So, that was, but that's why Mike said, we're trying to figure out what we're trying to establish tonight. Do we want to discuss that starting point, or do we want to, as we've been discussing, have a process to improve that first draft before we publish it, or before we discuss it? And I agree. Everyone, the whole purpose of public meeting is to get public input. And we would have to get public input every time we open this document for discussion to improve it. That's, so I wanted to clarify, that's what we're debating up here, what we're working on.
So, the process that I envision, maybe I'm wrong, is, to Kyle's point, we need a stake in the ground to protect the town from somebody floating in here and taking advantage of the fact that we have nothing. Right?
That's right.
Okay. So, having said that, has everybody seen this document?
No.
Did it get posted to the website? Jonathan?
Believe it did. I'll double-check.
Hold on. Hey, take it easy. We're not building any skyscrapers yet. There's no reason to get uptight.
Doesn't it have to look as the Attorney General first, because it's a zoning bylaw?
It's not a zoning bylaw.
It's not a zoning bylaw.
Attorney General?
Really? Because mine had a completely attorney general.
Please.
Mine was a zoning bylaw.
It's not a zoning bylaw.
Right.
But it's at least nine to eighteen or more.
Please. When it's time for comments, I'll invite you all up. You can have your say. I'm looking for the document. That's what I'm looking for. I haven't found it yet.
No.
I don't see it. It should be on here.
All right, folks, if you could keep it down while we're trying to work here for a second. So, if we can't, if we can't find this posted...
Again.
Again.
A million times.
Right, so, we can't...
We always are.
We can't adopt it if it wasn't posted for the public to read.
Correct.
But can we take some public input on it, so that when doable, we adopt it, we've got a little bit more info?
Right, yes, but I think, and I think, again, we need to clarify for the public, we are not adopting a zoning bylaw.
Correct.
The AG does not need to review what we're discussing, or will be discussing. This is not a zoning bylaw.
Correct.
Ideas.
Ideas. And keep in mind, all right, I know a lot of people have strong feelings on what's going on. You're dealing with a bunch of people up here who are all doing our very best to do what's best for this town. And if you don't believe that, just ask one of the solar developers, because those people come in and we put them through the wringer, trying to protect you folks. We're doing the same thing with this. We're just trying to find the right path forward to help Wareham continue to grow and to continue to be a better place. So, if you're here to get on a soapbox and tell us that we're doing a bad thing, don't waste my time. I'm not interested in listening to you. If you're here to help us with this process and make this a better place, I'm all ears. I'll stay here all night and listen to every single one of you.
And to clarify, we're not discussing the zoning bylaw.
Correct.
That's passed. The town adopted that. We have to live with that.
This is strictly rules and regs for design guidelines. So, who would like to go first?
What's your document that you're talking about? Nobody has an access.
Well, we just discussed that, and I just thought, that's why we're not going to vote on it tonight, because it was not posted to the site.
But it's not that in the spot.
No, it's not.
No, that's why I, that's why it brought my whole first question.
Oh, that's why I...
This is, this is a much more detailed view of how a building should look, what it's made of, how it should interact with the rest of the Main Street, and it should have been on the website, and I apologize for that. That's an oversight on our part.
Thank you.
Who would like to go first? This gentleman right there, all the way back.
I'm here.
You have to come forward and identify yourself, please. And they can take mine.
Yeah, they can take mine, too.
Yeah, we all have them. That's a good idea. You got two?
We're going to circulate...
The copies we have.
Good evening. Chris Consoletti, I have property. I actually own and operate the Wareham Village Funeral Home on Sinner Street, and I live at 69 High Street, actually the old warhouse. It's called...Reading what I've read in the paper, and I think I heard it in your opening statement on the document for tonight, you're setting the rules and regulations for new buildings.
Correct.
Just new buildings.
Well, it'll be...
So, how does that cover existing?
It'll be, it'll cover buildings torn to the ground and built back up.
Okay.
And it'll be, it'll apply to buildings that can be salvaged.
Or renovations and...
Renovations, correct.
All right, thank you.
Hopefully, we can put together a document that is something that if somebody's renovating their building, or doing any work to their building, that they might refer to as a suggestion of what they might want to think about.
Guidelines.
Guidelines. There you go.
Next. She keeps changing glasses. Yes, ma'am.
Angela Dunham. I am, full disclosure, president of the Wareham Historical Society, chairperson of the Wareham Historical Commission. I'm a member of the Wareham Historical District Commission. And there was no need for you to think that we were here to attack. We're all on the same page, exactly what you said. We're all here to make Wareham a better community. This is an incredible opportunity that actually is coming to us because of the crisis with global warming and sea rise. And I believe that everybody in this room is on the same page to, possibly even, as complex as it is, to make this a model for other shorefront communities. We're all aware of what's happened with communities down south, with the hurricanes and tornadoes and all of that. But back in the '70s, if you'll indulge me, there was a Massachusetts Growth Policy Report, prepared by the Office of State Planning, and that was regarding Stony Point Dyke. People were proposing to have that as being an open space for public access. And pretty much what comes out of this articulates what we all feel. So, we're all, again, on the same page. Massachusetts communities, 330 local growth policy committees in the Commonwealth cities and towns. Massachusetts communities want to preserve their special character and overall the character of the state. Villages don't want to be suburbs. Suburbs don't want to be cities. Cities don't want to be wastelands. In each community, there's a growing awareness that its identity is tied inextricably to its center. As the center loses its vitality and its place in the life of the community, the community loses its special character and becomes part of an endless stretch of shopping centers, car dealerships, and fast food chains. We get a sense of place, and summing it up, not from a community's outlying neighborhoods, but from its center. So, instead of perpetuating separate and distinct programs in response to narrowly-defined needs, state government is attempting to make all public investment funds part of a center revitalization program, which is what we're all here to do. We have talented professionals, and each of us are here as volunteers for the community to make this a better place. And I really believe if, working together, and the idea that you raised of having a committee, a subcommittee of people who are professionally qualified, which I am not, I'm just here to express my opinion at this point, and what I've talked about, I don't support 65-foot-tall buildings in our little tiny area. I don't believe that we have the space to accommodate that kind of growth. But we can certainly become a model for other shorefront communities. I realize that we're, our hands are tied because of the 15-foot, I believe it is a 15-foot standard, that you have to go from there up, if I'm mistaken.
14 feet.
14 feet?
Close enough.
Thank you. So, I realize our hands are tied, but I do believe, again, that we have talented people, professionals in this community, that if they are so inclined and respectfully asking that they step up and help us with these design standards coming forward, it will prevent greedy people that are outsiders, that don't care about the character of our community, that have no horse race, a horse in the race. There you go, sorry.
Dogging.
Sorry. Anyway...
To that point, to that point, not to interrupt you, but that was, that's one of the reasons why we're here.
Yes.
Is to Kyle's point, to put that stake in the ground, to protect us from day one, and then continue to evolve those guidelines based on the professionals in the town and non-professionals that have something to add.
Exactly.
Yep.
So, I thank you for hearing me out, and I look forward to watching this process move forward. In my capacity, I look at historic properties and through the Historical Commission, and the Historic Society has five buildings that we protect through our charter. And so, I thank you for all of the efforts, because I realize how complex this is and how important this is to saving our community. I moved here in 1954. I was four years old, and we moved here just before the 54 hurricane. And in speaking to someone yesterday, actually, the 54 hurricane perhaps is not the, what do I want to say, the standard or the base point, maybe the 38 hurricane, because I also was aware of what the 38 hurricane did here as well. I had family here before I moved to Wareham, and I remember traveling around the town and seeing all of the damage at Swift Beach, for example. And we all want to protect our community. So, I thank you for hearing me out, and I thank you for all of your efforts. But I'm hoping that you do form that committee for design standards to, and again, I think that this is an incredible opportunity for Wareham to be a model for other shorefront communities. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody but you?
I like this young lady. We'll make you wait.
I'm Millie Burrows, and I live in the Shangri-La neighborhood, far from the center. But I'm very involved in climate-related things. And so, first of all, I have three points that I want to make, and first, I just want to say thank you for doing what you do, because it's clear how difficult that job is, especially when there are so many confusing things that come up when you're trying to do business. So, thank you for what you do. So, my first point is that we don't have a lot of time, not only in terms of when developers may come to our door, but also in terms of what's happening with storm intensity and all of that. So, my one comment is that when we prioritize what's going to happen first, the amenities are very important to me in the downtown, but I think we need to prioritize preserving or renovating the buildings that we need to protect and keep safe from the rising waters, and maybe not so much with waterfront access, unless that's not logical, and I'm not an architect or a landscape design person, so I have that caveat. The other thing is, there were ideas that were presented at the town meeting about the, by the Development Committee, about suggestions for the downtown, and some of them were very appealing with the step-back buildings, the green space and all of that. So, I would just encourage you to put those to the forefront as you're considering the design plans that you have to put in place. And the third thing is, which probably should have been number one, because we never know when funds are going to run out, when the administration changes, many things change, and there's a lot to take advantage of now. So, I'm not in favor of temporary fixes that will have to go back in... So I'm not in favor of temporary fixes that will have to go back and ameliorate down the road. I'd rather we invest our dollars wisely in materials like reinforced concrete or whatever will withstand the water rising, and make that a priority so that what we do is sustainable right from the start, and we're not having to do it two times over. And that's all I have to say tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Ellis Levin. I guess I'm the senior selectman these days, unfortunately. This is a very difficult situation, et cetera. There's a lot of things going on right now. I believe back as much as eight, nine years ago, when I was actually... Excuse me, 12 years ago on the planning board, we talked about doing design standards for buildings in general. It was almost impossible, simply because, and Mike will know, we can't really force a builder to do exactly what we want. We can ask them to stay in a certain area, but that's where you're really at. We talk about preserving, but if you look at downtown Village 1R, there is no design standard. The buildings are mishmashed over the last 100 years. You've got right now, I think Dominic, who's in the crowd here, I believe he's bought the Santana Bank. He doesn't know what he's gonna do with it. At least, that's what he stole us. The Eastern Bank has been sold, and the guy who bought it decided it's not gonna work. It's up for sale again, and he wants to build housing.
For sale? Eastern Bank is?
Yeah, it's back up for sale.
I think I got some money.
I think he's looking for... Actually, what he's trying to get is bank financing. He called us. Ken can tell you about that. So when you look at the non-water side, you know, there is no...
There's no standard.
There's no standards. We do have some nice houses, one or two captain's houses, but I'll bring up... Mrs. Dunham was here. This is the Cooney House, which I remember, beautiful house, 8,000 square feet.
Is that the one that just got torn down?
Yep. There was a... I think there was a foundation issue in one area, but that's a shame that this was torn down. If people are talking about preserving, you know, from a historical point of view, we just made a huge mistake letting this go down. This could have been six to eight apartments in this particular house. So they obviously got a demolition permit from the town. That's number one. Number two, the town on the water side has always been light industry or industry. Wareham was a port. We used to get goods being shipped in. We had repair small ships, build ships. If you look at Danny Warren's project down by British Landing, it fits in. If you look on the other side by the Narrows Restaurant, look over, his building fits and makes sense. So that's the kind of thing you have to do. It's not colonial-looking, but it fits the actual area, and that's what you really need to kind of look at. And I'm gonna throw a real monkey wrench into all of this. The state of Massachusetts has basically committed, again, to housing as number one with the new governor. Alternative energy to the point of saying we're gonna have to have 35% of our energy alternative, which is solar and wind power. They don't care how we do it. You know, so we want to not cut down trees, not do this, not do that. They're not even giving us a shot at it, basically. Just as another reference, the Fairing Hill Project, which I was very disappointed to hear the Conservation Commission was overruled by the state, and their decision not to allow it has been canceled out. Because I know you have that on your agenda as well somewhere down the line. So I expect that they'll be back talking to you shortly. So all I'm trying to get is, we have... I've been working five, six years now on commuter rail. Commuter rail, basically, the way things work right now, Wareham is what they call a neighboring community because of the Lakeville Station. We're required to have a certain amount of housing because of that designation. Mr. Buckland can tell you that right now, we just squeak by and qualify. If we become a commuter rail community, the number of housing we have to have within a certain distance around that train station, which would be the Cape Flyer, increases substantially. So whatever you decide to do, you're gonna have to really look at what they call transit-oriented development. There are grants, there are all kinds of programs from the state and federal government. So when you get a train station coming in a commuter rail, what normally happens is, and you can look at a lot of areas around the state, you have basically retail in the lower level, you have apartments above it, and it's worked out very well everywhere. And we have buildings on the water side that really... They're not generating what they could for the residents, for the rent's too high for what they actually are. They're not getting upgraded properly or anything else. You also have a restaurant that's invested money on the water side, who would like to... I think I talked to Ken today about actually going over... Airways, over Merchant's Way. I'll repeat for everybody who doesn't know, Merchant's Way is not a street. It never was a street. Merchant's Way belongs to the New Haven Railroad. That was their parking lot for the trains. And what happened is, 1954, New Haven Railroad sold to the town of Wareham for a dollar, a parking lot, with the stipulation that we had to keep 1,500 square feet in reserve if they ever decided to bring commuter rail back and there'd be an actual train station for them. Doesn't have to be the one that's there now, the little one, but that was a requirement. Ken and I went and basically lobbied, basically Mass DOT Rail, who actually owns everything now. It's no longer owned, you know, by... As far as the rail goes, it's not, you know, Mass Coaster or anything else. We did the best we could. They basically told us to go away. They refused to give us... To knock that off the thing, so we're still liable for this whole thing. So all I'm trying to get is, there's probably a 50% chance commuter rail comes in, and now we're gonna be required to increase housing with so many feet of that actual station at the Cape Flyer. So whatever you decide to do, understand that what you'd like to do, you may not be able to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll leave you with this, which is the...
Was that the salt in the wound? You know how I feel about that.
I know. I just... You and I own the same place.
Yeah. I see a hand, but I can't see a face with it.
Well... No, I don't have a tattoo on my body.
I can arrange that for you.
Good evening, Dominic Camarano. How you doing? I want to commend you on the work you do. I have one question. I've already filed for a federal grant for the redevelopment of any village or any center. There's a couple of grants out there already written that you can apply for. So I would suggest that this might be top of the billing foyers. So if someone does get a grant, you know how those grants are, they have time limits on them. And, I mean, I'm a Wareham person, so I wouldn't do anything that would jeopardize anything in town. I own a bunch of buildings in town with my partner Bob, and I just thought that you might want to know that the grants are already available to be applied for. And without you said, rules and regulations, you might get somebody to come in and do something we don't like. And...
That's the whole purpose.
That's right. But I just wanted to let you know that those grants are already out there, and I have applied for one. I mean, I have the property on the corner of Sawyer and Main where the fire was. The other thing I wanted to say is, people are all worried about the height. The chimney on 191 Main is already over 60 feet, and my property's at 48 feet. So I don't think that height is as important as people think. I think the buildings there are a little higher than they think. And I just want to commend you for doing your work right, and looking forward to seeing the regs. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, Peter Tyalom again. You're talking about design guidelines. Design guidelines exist to further goals. And I think I've heard a lot of people talk about the goals of what could it look like? Should it be like a New England-y village? Should it be, you know, something that reflects upon the town's port and industrial past, which frankly, I think is kind of a neat idea? If you look at the architecture of British Landing, and you look at the architecture of the Eastern Bank Building, you know, that might be something that you would want to have continued. You might want that brick construction. That's every bit as New England as, you know, Cedar Shingles. But you've also got an opportunity to do some other things, other than look at, okay, we want it to look like this, or we want it to be that style. You've got an opportunity to say that you want a certain amount of square feet in there to be reserved for commercial and retail. You've got an ability to reward people for height by asking them for more of that. You've got an opportunity to expect the developers to work with the existing business community if there's any dislocations, to try to provide them with places to be. So the palette is wide open here. Please don't just restrict it to what it's gonna look like, or density, or things like that. Think of the impacts on the existing businesses down there, and try to bake in some cure if there is dislocation. Try to look at the goals of the public access space and try to figure out percentages, you know, X amount if you're developing 5,000, more if you... Higher percentage if you're doing 10,000, even more if you're doing 20,000, whatever it is. I mean, I'm not expert in those areas. You've got an architect, though, who probably is pretty sharp on that stuff. So you might want to listen to her a little more than just somebody off the street like me, but I think you've got an opportunity to do a lot more than just talk about appearances and dimensions and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Sandy Cormier. Just a couple of things. I know there was meetings prior to this where the community got together and had ideas. Is that something that would be, you know, we could share? Like, what were the ideas? You know, maybe... I don't know whether we'll meet again before this, but it would have been nice that you... Was it your group that did that? The ideas for the redevelopment?
Redevelopment Authority?
The community input?
That was the Redevelopment Authority, not the Planning Board.
Okay. Because they must have had a lot of good ideas, right?
Right town, wrong people.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe that, you know, working together, cross-functionally to...
Yeah, I think we've touched on that subject, that it's... We fully intend on this being a collaborative effort.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody has a stake in it. We all live here.
Because I think I missed it, right? So I, as I come here tonight, I don't know that, you know, were you discussing nightclubs? Were you discussing, you know, like, I don't know.
I think the Redevelopment Authority had three or four...
At least.
Three or four public outreaches.
Yeah. Yeah. I think I made it to the first. Yeah.
But, you know, the idea is obviously, like we said before, we need to get an initial stake in the ground to protect ourselves from a developer who's gonna take advantage of the fact that we have nothing. Then from there, once that stake in the ground is set, then we can put together the committee of collaborators, whether it be professionals, whether it be local residences, lifetime, you know, residences that have been here since day one.
Right.
Gather all the input we can. I mean, we're not here to redesign Wareham. We're here to make sure that it gets redesigned properly.
Right. The second point I had was that it was mentioned that it's not worth it to revitalize your building or to improve your building. Financially, you can't spend more than half of what the building's worth. But if you look at like a building like Santana Bank that is currently going, I think, for $600,000, $300,000 would make a big difference. That could turn that into a restaurant or a cafe.
Oh, absolutely.
So you could go to 50% on a lot of the buildings and make some of these smaller, cute buildings, cute.
Well, additionally, who knows? That building might actually be at the elevation it needs to be. I don't know the answer to that. If it is, then that 50% thing is off.
Yeah, then you can spend all you want.
Yeah. It's the 50% is if you are not meeting the FEMA elevation that you're supposed to be at for...
I assumed anything on that side was probably part of one-sided mainstream.
I don't know. I mean, it's...
Firehouse, I think it's pretty close.
It actually goes up from down at where Cumberland Farms is, is really low, and those buildings are probably not at the elevation they need to be. But the ones, once you get up toward the fire station, they may actually be there. And then, as I said, the 50% is off the table. You can use it, spend as much as you want.
Right, right. But I mean, so you do keep that as an option, that people fix up the buildings they're in?
Yeah, absolutely.
And they're waiting for a developer to come in and make them an offer.
Yeah, if it works to, you know, be within their budget and 50%, if they're in the flood zone, then that's fine.
Yeah. Just the last thing I'm gonna say is, like, if you look at High Street and those new buildings that went there, they're what I would call California-style, and it just doesn't fit. Like, when you drive down that road, you see those buildings, they're just... Maybe when there's plants and trees that block them, it will be better, but like, that's a perfect example of a mismatch for the street.
I agree.
One thing. Mr. Chairman...
Reaching to the choir.
We didn't approve those, by the way.
Throw you to the citizen. The citizen made a comment about uses, like, would a nightclub be approv... Well, I'm gonna answer your question. So what we're talking about tonight with rules and regs is not going to address those things. Now, I'm sort of a zoning bylaw geek. That's clearly defined in Article 320 of the zoning bylaws. And there's a table there that lists every approved use by district. So you can go down, and it was voted on at the town meeting, you... There's a WV1R column, and all of the uses allowed in town. And you could go across and see if that use is allowed in that district. You could also see what uses are allowed in your home where you live.
Right.
So that's where that's defined, and that's what I'm gonna talk about in the next presentation, which you guys weren't interested in.
Okay. I didn't know if it was part of the ideas from the redevelopment meetings and stuff.
Well, that's... Those ideas got incorporated in the bylaw, and the uses that are allowed in that district were approved at town meeting. So that, those kinds of things has to be, have to be adopted at town meeting, and that's not part of the bylaws. And just so you know, no, I won't.
Go ahead.
I don't want to make... We could put a 10-acre piggery right next door to all of those buildings in the current zoning bylaws.
You'd have to come up with 10 acres.
You have to find 10 acres, but if you had 10 acres, you could put a pig farm downtown.
Okay.
But you have to put together 10 acres. But you have to put together 10 acres. But you have to put together 10 acres.
Yeah, you could do it on 5 acres, too. There's a different... I'm just saying, so that's... You gotta pay attention when you vote at town meeting for uses in districts. It's an important thing to pay attention to. We're gonna try and fix that, but by the way, about the pigs.
Ma'am?
Good evening, Brenda Ekstrom. I know this is gonna be so off of what you guys are talking about, but a previous speaker spoke about using the right materials, and I agree with that. But I also agree that there are towns in Massachusetts, I believe Canton is one, Cohasset, and Situ, it might be others, that they actually tell you colors that you can use downtown to give it a more uniformed look. And I know because a million years ago, I worked at a bank. The bank's colors were teal and white, and they were opening a branch in Canton. And Canton said, "Sorry, you need to use blue number 182," or whatever it was. And we had to change the logo of the bank, keep the same design but change the color, if we wanted to put a sign outside. So I think that that might be something that personally aesthetically, I think that would be really nice to bring down there. And as the previous speaker said about as far as if we're using the right materials, you know, I'm sure you've seen places where, like, the McDonald's looks like a log cabin or, you know, it's a Shaker Shingles or whatever, because that's what they have in their design standards. So I would really like to see something like that in it. And I love the idea of having a group, like a subcommittee, maybe a couple of you guys with some residents or something. And earlier, when I was talking about the zoning bylaw, oh, I was talking about going to the Attorney General. I just meant the zoning bylaw that was approved has to go to the Attorney General, not the rules and regs, but you have at least 90 days before they approve it. So you do have time to have a committee, like Ms. Gleason said, and other people thought it was a great idea, and to get things going. And, you know, you never have to reinvent the wheel if you grab other towns' things and kind of pull their things out. So I... That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll cite an example that I've brought up before, that when you talk about color, I mean, we can go from soup to nuts, how much we add into these design guidelines. There are some... There are some design guidelines out there that are this thick, and they tell you, you can use these four colors, and they're all different variations of white, and that's it. So, you know, you can, you can go from very loose and very vague to very specific. It's just, it's a matter of what, what the town wants and how much the town is willing to push, you know, and insist on certain things. I mean, you go to Nantucket, and you go out there, and it's like, wow, this is really beautiful. But boy, oh, boy, if you try and build something there, it's onerous, what the, what the guidelines are. It's really onerous. So you got to sort of weigh and find a place where Wareham fits in there. And, and not make it necessarily so onerous on, on the developers or, or even just regular property owners.
Yeah, you could take it to, take it to an unhealthy level, to the point where we never get any progress in town. There's got to be a, you know, a happy medium. Hello, Annie.
I think that was an invitation.
Annie, was it?
What did you say, Domin?
There's no trees down there.
No, no. Yeah, we want them.
There should be.
We'll put them in, right, Jane? Every comment, Annie Hayes, every comment opens up so many thoughts and an invitation to a whole other conversation. I'm trying to stick to responding almost to each. But your import, your statement, Jane, I want to comment after, because this is a very unique situation. The land that we intend to redevelop has shrunk. Some of it's going to be sponge parks, which is a great opportunity. It's, it's a new concept for communities to have a sponge park, and it opens up a lot more green space. And then the possibility of dining, watching a hurricane come in over the sponge park, you know? You could advertise that. But it's, it's very unique in the limited size, I mean, the limited space. This seems to be, to people who may download this, it has a color coding, and it tells you how every building relates to the floodplain.
Okay, are you ready?
It, who, oh.
You've got to face the microphone.
It has a color coding and, color coding and...
Should have brought enough for the class.
I know, I should have. But the buildings are cover, color-coded. Some of them kind of blend together, but you can pretty much tell, which is infeasible, not practical, to be in the new development scheme. And I don't know if that means how many are being asked to go away, but that leads me to, I read that on May 17th, the architects or the developers of this plan are coming again.
Yes, the consultants are going to come back with the, with the cost-benefit analysis of doing that exact work that you're talking about.
So it's not a, is it a public hearing? Is it for input, or it's just to hear their representation of cost?
They'll take comments when they present their information.
Because you and I have talked about the bridge, the Narrows Bridge. This isn't on the plan, and they're not designing that, right?
No, they're not designing it, but it is part of the consideration.
It's a big part of the consideration, and it's not a, it's not a high bridge. So that's, that's not something I think has been discussed publicly about how that's dealt with, nor the, one, I understand there's one egress or entrance, the same, to Toby Hospital, and that's in the floodplain. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, that is correct.
So that's, that's not really practical, and is it in this plan?
No.
The architects.
I think you're, I think you're veering off course, though.
I am.
We're, we're talking about design standards, guidelines, what we'd like to see built, not which roads going to flood.
I'm hearing. Important question, so. So Ken, what I thought you were saying was that there are three ways of looking at that. That's, that's what your slides were about, your slide was about.
That's correct.
And one is that you said, "In this instant, design standards ask for a relationship between new and existing buildings." In my mind, because I've always lived in, around here in New England towns, hodgepodge is an architectural style. It evolves so much in relationship to the building next door and how much light and air and all of these things, that it turns out to be its own style that works in a, in a way. Now, if you have a 65-foot building, because somebody gets approval from the bank to do that, and it's allowed, Mr. Tylenbaum's comment comes in, that how you work with a little gable and one-story building that's next to it. The only way Wareham Village is going to work as an enterprise is if it's attractive to be in, if it's exciting, dynamic, and it really works. Now, a lot of towns like Nantucket are very particular because they want that insured. If that's not insured, it's a crapshoot in a lot of ways. So less space, variabilities that are great, unless you incentivize the young woman who spoke at town meeting who has a specialty shop, and she just poured her heart out because her heart was breaking, that she's just invented, I mean, invested so much time and energy, and she's very threatened by this. There was another property owner that said the same thing. So it's a really difficult design problem, I think. And then, I think you might have been sort of meta-talking about the fact that the zoning board has a lot of power in this situation. Is that correct? Unless we have, unless there are guidelines that are quite particular, really good guidelines that are quite particular to this area. And so I'm wondering about the possibility of some collaboration with them so that we don't go AWOL through what they might decide.
But again, I revert back to the, we need the stake in the ground.
Okay.
You need to start, you need to decide what kind of house you build before you decide what color to paint.
I'm totally with you on that. But this is a, maybe a broader view. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, we need to look at it from 30,000 feet and from 10 feet.
From street level, right. Ma'am?
Pam Foley. Okay, good, that works. Thank you again for everything that you're doing. I think it's wonderful. I think this is a great opportunity for everybody. I just want to say I like the idea of a, of a committee. I think that would be great to kind of fine-tune all of everything. But to get back to Ken's presentation, I think that for something to be just put in place so that there is a stake in the ground, that, you know, something should be voted on based on his presentation, is what I think. I think the presentation's good. Yeah, it's not solid as, you know, the document, but I think it's, it's a good starting point for you guys to have something there, if someone were to come before you. I think it leaves us less open and less vulnerable. But I think the presentation as it was presented is good, and I just think it's something that maybe should be considered to move forward with. Okay, that's my thought. Oh, and one other point about this, this house. This came before the Historic Commission, and I'm on the Historic Commission. I don't even know why this was brought up in this meeting. This was determined because the foundation was not feasible. The foundation was not able to sustain that building any longer, and there were structural issues with it that made it cost prohibitive for the owner to do anything with this building. So there's more behind the story than this building, that it was just approved by the commission to, to knock this thing down. There was terrible structural issues with it. And sadly to say, I wish it could have been another way, but that's what happened with it. It was not structurally sound. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Jeff Burrows. I'm just curious, I don't know much about building and construction and all that, but does all this stuff get rubbed against insurance underwriters? Give an example. A building might be renovated, right? About five years from now, no underwriter touches it, or grant money's been spent, et cetera, but it can always be insured. There's probably property sitting down there right now that can't be insured. Let me give you an example of myself, okay? This past year, my homeowner, no changes at all, I'm not in a flood zone, nothing. My homeowners went up 70% in one year. So I'm wondering if this, if you rub anything at all against insurability or check with underwriters or whatever when you're, when you're designing phases of all this stuff. That doesn't have to be answered today, but I'm just curious.
I, I think any developer, any developer that would sink hundreds of thousands, if not millions, into a project that, that he isn't 100% sure can be insured, I doubt very much he'd go forward.
But my point being sustainability, you know, something, if somebody designed something for 50 years, that's great.
Yeah.
But if you can spend a couple more dollars and get 100 years and no questions about insurability, you know, that's, that's my question. Does that get taken into account? That's just a question.
Yeah, no, I understand. And I think it's, it's a great point, but I think it goes back to that, nobody has a crystal ball.
No, absolutely.
You just don't know.
Absolutely not.
You know, this, I mean, look at all the people in Florida who are getting, can't get insurance.
Exactly.
They just can't.
But, but it could be set, you know, there's probably certain areas right now that are close to floodzone. And if anybody puts a lot of money in there, they might, they might own it outright, but to renovate it and all that.
Well, if they own it...
Insurance bill that says, "You shouldn't have done that."
Yeah. If they own it outright and they renovate it and they can't get insurance, then they're not.
That's their call. Exactly, exactly. My other point was, I'm curious, a question about solar. Would this whole area be deemed no solar panels allowed? If that's the case, then I don't have any other questions. But my other question would be, if solar is, is potential, and it should always be, renewables should always be there, do you end up getting into fights about building heights? I'll give you an example. Somebody puts their solar panels in, a new building goes up next to them that's three times the height of their building, and they lost their solar.
We have, as a board, run into that question once already.
Okay.
Not so much on buildings, but just an array on the ground being shadowed by a new house. And I think at the end of the day, it was, things change.
I'm just, I mean, but, but, but can you front-end it to eliminate that problem, you know, with all your building heights? I don't know.
But would you, I guess...
That's not a design, that's a use.
That's a usage, right?
And right now, rooftop solar is as of right in every district in town.
Right. Whether or not it's going to be effective because of what's around it is another story.
But you might have all this beautiful design and it just gets covered up with solar panels. I'm not against solar panels, I'm all for it, no, but it can get ugly.
I think as Mr. Slavin, I think it was Mr. Slavin spoke earlier, we're being pushed, and we have, the, the local planning boards are getting less and less and less control over solar. And alternative energy, battery, not so, battery is a big concern, but that's a, that's part of my mix.
So stay for the next presentation.
Yeah, the next one's going to be even better.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
They're farther along than we are.
No, no, I wouldn't say that, but, okay.
Is there anybody else before we, we're definitely not going to close the public hearing, we're just going to continue. So, but is there anything else that needs to be said before we move on tonight?
Could I ask another question, Mr. Chairman?
No. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. This is, through you to Ken. Ken, with the design guidelines or rules and regulations, I understand that the, the zoning bylaw will go to the Attorney General. Its effective date, though, will be backdated to when it was voted on?
That's when the town meeting voted on it, yeah. That's when it's effective.
So even though it won't be effective for a few months, when it becomes effective, it will be backdated. And so to those who are interested or concerned about a stake in the ground, I would say there's a reason to have a stake in the ground for something that might be filed between, you know, now and when you could get rules and regulations that you really like in place.
Yep.
And so something that looks like a two-step process may... At least two. Yeah. Maybe it's, maybe it's continually walking.
As I said, you know, being rules and regs, it can, like, it can be a life document, you know?
But I think that we've got the beginnings of some upgrades to the draft that's already in place, that we could put into effect with this first vote.
That's right. And that's the intent, is to get something in place and then work on it in several ways that we could...
Right. But I think that we could, this first step of what we, the stake that we're putting in the ground, we could augment.
You know, you're not supposed to get two terms.
Sure I can. I've voted twice.
We shut off everybody, sorry.
Just real quick, we had an issue back...
Who were you again?
I have no idea. We had an issue back a long time ago, actually, the planning board, Ken and Mike would know, about wind, wind, wind power. And once we did the public hearing, that set the date, because it became public and that's it. So if you do something and make it a public hearing, and you basically present something that the public has at that time, anybody coming next day on, they still have to go into that, whatever that sounds of, just so you know.
That's, that's correct.
That's for a special permit.
So the fact that we've discussed it tonight kind of sets the...
No, no, it's really for the zoning bylaw. It doesn't apply to our rules and regs.
Well, I still think, it's just my own opinion. I still think we should take the draft and, and use it as a starting point.
Oh, I think that...
We saw what happened with solar.
Yep.
When we, when we voted at a town meeting, we had, what, nine applicants the next day? And it's not going to hurt us.
And, and that's, that's the other thing to, to note. The applicant does not need to submit plans for development for the bylaw. They could submit, we, remember, we had the whole discussion about A&amp;Rs with Baypoint. And, and I established that those are subject to the bylaws from 2016. If somebody comes in tomorrow and files an A&amp;R for a piece of property in the downtown, it, it, that, they're protected for that bylaw. And I'm not sure, the, the rules and regs, little different, but at least they're, they can protect that property for, for that, for that version of the bylaw. So we don't need even somebody to come in with a, with, "I'm going to build 65 feet up." They could just say, "I own this, these properties, I want to file just a lot line, outline," and they, they're protected for that zoning by, by law.
So in that case, is that something my home owns, or...
Identify yourself again.
Pam Foley. So in that case, with that being said, wouldn't it be advantageous to vote something towards his presentation this evening?
We're not...
We're looking to put something into place tonight. Personally, and this is only my personal opinion, I think the outline that we have, that we, that we shared with you folks is much more protective than what Ken put up. I think Ken's presentation's a little bit too general, I don't think it gives...
It's, it's not in the form of rules and regulations that we could adopt, which is...
This, this gives us, you know, I keep saying, same phrase, it gives us a stake in the ground. From there, we can move forward, whether we start with the collaborative meetings a week from now or a month from now, at least we have a starting point.
So...
I would hate to see the momentum stop on advancing.
Right.
So what, what I think we need to do is take Jane's update, I'm sorry, I wasn't cutting you off, I'm supporting. We need to take Jane's notes and make a quick turnaround on a baseline document and get that properly noticed and published.
That would be preferable to me.
So why don't we do that?
And then we can continue the public hearing and, and review that document when it's, when it's everybody's...
So we can set for the 22nd? Do you think we can get that?
Turned around, I, I don't know how much...
Does that give us enough time to post it as a public hearing?
No, no, we have the public hearing. We could post more.
Continue it.
Continuing right now.
So it needs to be posted by when?
By...
The Thursday before the meeting.
The Thursday before, so a week from next Thursday.
Yeah, that's, plenty of time, yeah.
Ken is very optimistic about our ability to...
So is this just me taking a stab at it, or...
Yes. Well, if you want to send it for, for...
If you want to send it out to the board.
People to review.
Let me put a draft together.
And then, you know, we'll get all of our, our thoughts back into you and then to Ken.
Jane, I have no questions.
Perfect. Each of us has to communicate, communicate separately with you, so you'll be getting...
So it's not a, it's not a deliberation. So it's not a deliberation.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, no group emails.
Move to continue the hearing?
Yes, I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing for the WV1R District for Rules and Regulations and Guidelines.
To the 22nd?
To the 22nd.
Do we think Fearing Hill is going to be here that night?
I don't believe so. We've had no correspondence from him, right?
The date's certain when we're going back to the Fearing Hill. I don't remember what date that was.
It's next, it's the next meeting.
It's on there for the 22nd.
But the court, the state court hasn't ruled yet.
Right.
The state has, but not the court.
The DEP ruled, but not the court, I don't think.
Okay, all right, so the 22nd's still available for us?
Good.
All right, so.
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Carl Schultz, all in favor. Sherry?
Aye.
Mike? Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Question. Should we continue the public hearing on Fearing Hill?
We can't without.
You can, you can until the 22nd.
You can call Joe?
Yeah, you can call Joe and ask him to extend it, and then you can extend it on the 22nd.
They're not gonna show up.
And ask him for a formal request to extend?
That's right.
From his side?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. So Jonathan, you can take care of that?
Yes.
Awesome, okay.
So what does that, I'm sorry.
That was, that was Fearing, that was Fearing Hill.
Different issue.
We continued this process until the 22nd. We'll hopefully get you a document to look at before then.
Right. And it'll be different than that one. It'll be a little bit more involved, the one that Jane's been working on. But at least, it'll give us a place to get started.
Yep. That's what we need.
Yep. Okay.
Boy, is there anything else? Okay, Carl.
All right, back to preliminary business, proposed bylaw amendments, Article 14 and 15, land use permitting discussion. You just lost your audience, Carl.
It's okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, as you know, the.
Folks, folks.
Can we be quiet? We still have a meeting.
Yeah, we're still working here.
The board has authorized two subcommittees that Sherry and I are working on. One is to rewrite Articles 14 and 15, which really deal with site plan review, special permit, subdivision, but also with alternative energy issues. Now, in my status update, what Sherry and I talk about, we'll touch on a little bit on alternative energy, but that primarily, we want to bring you forward on Article 14 and 15, because we really need to make some progress there. So there is some flavor of the alternative energy issues here, but I want to focus on getting some feedback from you on where we want to go with site plan review and the rules and regulations for land use. Now, of course, my pages are going to be out of order. Thanks. So what we hope to leave here today with is some priority of things we need to focus on, your acknowledgement that we're moving in the right direction. And that's what the presentation, and I want to refer to you as, we do have a first draft of Article 15, which can help us prepare. And it's a starting point, which was attached to the minutes. I'm not going to talk about that too much, but it's there for your, for your review. Okay, so the objectives. The clear objective, I think, that we heard in the beginning of the year is the bylaws as currently written really conflate the issues of site plan review and special permit. And rather, the town, we have support from town attorney that our position for doing that is substantiated and as defensible. Sherry and I are recommending that clarifying that distinction will make it easier to manage bylaws going forward. In addition, by going through the process of clarifying site plan review, special permit, some, to some degree subdivision, we already have subdivision rules and regs, which need to be reviewed, it gives us the ability to create rules and regulations for land use, which as we talked about in the last session, having, moving some of the material out of a bylaw into rules and regulations gives us a lot more flexibility to respond to events that are rapidly changing around us. Some of that, much of that is in the area of alternative energy. But there are other, other things that are just coming at us rapid fire. And that, the process of going through bylaw review and town, town meeting is cumbersome. And as you know, over a year ago, we approved, the town approved a solar bylaw update. We're still waiting for the Attorney General to rule on it. So there are things that we could, we could deal with through rules and regulations. So by doing this, we hope to add that. We're not trying to subvert anything, we're not trying to hide anything, but we're trying to move those things out of bylaw where we reasonably can, can regulate through rules and regs. It gives us much more flexibility. It's all open, the town will hear about it, everything will be approved in open meeting. It just doesn't need to go through the town bylaw process. I mentioned, once we get the distinction, site plan review and special permit, site plan review, special permit is sprinkled throughout the bylaws. And that's sort of, in the next page, what we need to do. But clearly, we need to review the uses in the use table and make sure that the current land uses are appropriately tagged for needing special permit or site plan review or, and/or both. So we need to go through Article 320. And as I said, we're gonna sort of de-emphasize the alternative energy. But if the AG should come back and make substantive changes to Article or Section 590, which is solar, we may think about what does that mean for the bylaws.
Carl, if I could just interject, I think the part of alternative energy that we're de-emphasizing is the solar part of it as we await the Attorney General. There are several elements of it, like batteries and agri-solar. Which. That are not currently treated by our bylaws, that we think we cannot wait to address, that we would like to address them in the same, you know, basket of things so that we have something to take to town meeting, the next town meeting, that addresses battery storage and agrivoltage.
And that would be something we're looking for your support on us doing that.
Can you briefly describe what agrisolar is?
Agrivoltage? It's very.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
It sounds more complicated than it is.
Well, but the real, the real issue is, in August of 2022, the state passed a law which basically took away our ability to regulate agrivoltage.
That's not through special permit.
Through special permit. So our approach might be, we add site plan review at least to those things. So we get some input. But the state took away our ability to regulate solar over agriculture through special permit. And that was August of 2022. So the benefits, I just said, what are the benefits of this approach? Clearly distinguished between site plan review and special permit will allow us to apply site, site plan review to other as-of-right uses. So we, as I mentioned in the previous topic, rooftop solar is as-of-right. We have no ability, in the way it's currently coded, no ability to weigh in on that. However, there may be some rooftop solar or solar over parking lots where we want to do a site plan review. Now, we can't deny. Site plan, but we can condition it or influence it without, you know, so now by separating site plan review and special permit, we can apply site plan review to as-of-right uses. And then the other benefit is the flexibility we get from rules and regs. So what are we looking for, you guys? Just, have we got the right things in the right priority order? Are there any other questions you want to see us address? And the action plan and deliverables. So the approach is, we're going to eliminate Article 14. In the current versions of the bylaws, Article 14 sort of deals with special permits and some zoning stuff, ZBA articles. We're not going to change it so much, but we're going to add it into an organized way within Article 15. We're going to rewrite Article 15 to clearly distinguish site plan review, special permit, and to clearly identify the land use topics. We'll probably, and I don't remember, Ken, if the draft you put out, but we'll add something that, that addresses the concept of design review as a concept and a land use process, so that it's at least defined. The other thing we've been talking to Ken about is zoning articles are primarily legal artifacts. But we also think there's the opportunity to improve the wording such that we're educating non-zoning bylaw geeks in what, what this zoning bylaw does and why you need to do it, so that people who come before us have, have at least had the opportunity for better information about the process. We're gonna look, we're gonna create a land use rules and regulations document. We need to go through 320, 330, and 340 to make sure, to the best of our ability, that the use tables and the alternative uses are properly defined. 340 is where all the definitions are. I think it's become completely out of sync with the rest of the document.
It should go into definitions.
That perhaps, we haven't even thought, I haven't even gotten that far in thinking about it.
Yeah.
We need to at least read all the other, because site plan review, special permit is sprinkled throughout the bylaws.
Yeah.
And we just need to make sure that if it's in there, it's at least consistent with the direction we're going. And then, Section 590 with respect to solar, unless we get some devastating news from the AG, we're not going to focus on that first. Okay. So what we have done through a variety of discussions and seeking input from some members of the community is come up with a list of questions or issues that we think, in addition to splitting site plan review and special permit, which is a big focus upfront, and then we'll talk about some of the battery issues and agrivoltage, but things we need to address. And we want to throw them at you to say, okay, yes, these are things that should be addressed. And so with reflect, with respect to site plan review and special permit, clearly our fir, and the bolded ones are the ones that we think are priority and must-dos. We talked about, we need to clarify site plan review, special permit, and where they're needed, where they may both be needed, and we need to be clear on that. I could read these. We need to update application requirements, update the application documents, which we've started to do, but we need to have a set of application documents that are consistent with what the board wants to see in terms of process, in terms of materials submitted to us and things like that. So we'll take a look at that. I mentioned earlier, it came up with design review for the WV1R district. But we think that there are many times when a pre-application review or a design review, whatever the, would be helpful, because frequently we've commented that often the applicant is sitting before us and we're doing design on the fly with the applicant. And there may be a better way to take some of that out of the.
Do you think, do you think it would be a process where, like you said, it's like a review, almost a pre-meeting?
Yes, that's what it would be. And, and it's not done, but the vision would be, that's, that's really things that we would rely on the zoning enforcement officer, the planning office. Clearly, the zoning enforcement officer reviews the application right up front and decides.
Right. Can it or can't it?
Can it. But clearly, you know, Ken and Jonathan, participating in all this, know the struggles that we have and the hot buttons and the questions. And hopefully, we can, we can eliminate some of that.
Rather than taking up time in the meeting.
Right.
And doing their work and costing them more money.
Right, but not only that, but a pre-design or a design review that happens before that, the clock, I don't, does that, the clock hasn't started yet, right? We can, we could sort of control when the clock starts.
Well, when there's an application that's submitted, that's sort of an official start.
Yeah, right, but if we could keep them from getting a stamped application before.
Right, a pre-application review.
Yeah.
Yeah, couldn't we have almost like a workshop?
Yeah, there's lots of ways to deal with it.
They came in and said, "This is what we're thinking," before they get to the application point.
We have a project review meetings.
Right.
Right. And that's why I'm saying, if we codify it and make it clear that we believe that's a process that we want you to follow.
Yeah.
We may not be able to require it, but we let them know that it's available to them and maybe find a way to put the benefits into the, into the language. We haven't talked about having another marketing document which goes along with this, although Ken has done a wonderful marketing document for another town that we're gonna talk about. I forget what town it was now, I've lost it in my mind, but.
Denim.
Denim, yeah. So that we could publish to say, here's, you want to do, you want to do land use application? Here's why, come to Wareham, here's what, here's what you gotta do. But it's, it's more marketing. That would be last. We wanted to expand, right now, we only ask if there's any outstanding tax. Do, we think we'd like to know all fines, penalties, awards, judgments. They've got to stipulate all that, beyond just taxes, if they owe the town anything. A list of review conditions incorporating more, more wording around aquifer, more wording around visual character traffic. There's, some of those requirements are there. We haven't really talked about the aquifer really hard and the requirements. There may be some other things, and you guys may have some. Talk about these things in the application, or make sure they're called out, or make sure that we review them.
And Sam, this is something that you've highlighted for us, that you'd like to see in the applications coming to us, what the effect on water is, including the aquifer.
The next two, Historic and National Heritage Review and Endangered Species, the language in the current bylaws is broad. And the more research I do, there's, there's like lots of different ways you could approach this, and there's state laws around this. It's not, it's not, if we could clarify for, this is, tell the applicant what they've got to provide, but clarify for the citizens what's going to get considered or what's not going to get considered, so that they're not disappointed if we, if we don't embrace, you know, a position of, I'm going to use Fearing Hill, about the turtles. And I'm not saying we're not going to, but, but it's unclear how we, how we have to deal with that, or what weight we give to that, or what, what is the body that provides the reference source to say, yes, we're going to use this, this governing body to say it's in scope or out of scope, or there's turtles there, or there's no turtles there. And I only use that as an example, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not telegraphing anything. But it's not clear to the applicant, it's not clear, it wasn't clear to us when we began dealing with some of these applications. Well, who tells us whether there's, or how much weight should we give to, you know, ancient ways? We need to communicate that better to everybody involved, at least to us, so when we're making a decision. We've gotten some extensions of special permits. We need better information and better understanding what's involved in granting an extension. We touched on that.
Well, we have a legal interpretation from counsel. I think we would benefit, I think our bylaws would benefit from some more detail on what may be within scope and outside of scope.
Great, great. We talked about, we have, we have the 53G account, but perhaps we can communicate further fees. fees that we can impose, not just that we can impose for inspections, reviews and compliance, so that there's a fee schedule. Okay, we're going to review a solar project every 30 days, and it's $50 a review, and we just communicate that right up front. It's not subject to sort of negotiating in the 53G, it may come from a 53G account, but the fee schedule is already, like, like the application fees and things like that are communicated, maybe we can, maybe we can do something with that. Ken isn't so sure we can do this, but I felt strongly if we could tightly couple building permit, certificate of occupancy, the certification or confirmation that the conditions of approval have been met. I'm not sure how far we can go with that, but we can clearly state that that's our Right now, and this has come up a couple of times, where it might make sense for us to waive some requirement, if it's in the bylaw, but if we move some things to the, to the rules and regs, we could clearly, we could clearly state that this, this can be waived under whatever condition. But right now, there's very few places, if any, in the bylaws as written, that the planning board can waive anything. There's some maybe in the subdivision rules and regs, but it's not a lot of places where we're given the authority to waive a requirement, so we want to look at that. We need a process, this was, the way I wrote it was, or the way we wrote it, was thinking with solar, the five-year bond review, but we need, we need a better process for reviewing bonds. Clearly, from the confusion with Attorney Rosa, nobody knows whether the bond is there or not. And we need a better way, I don't know what that is, but that may be a procedural issue, not a bylaw issue. Decommissioning, how do we deal with decommissioning? I don't know if we can attack that between now and town meeting, but if we move the decommissioning out of the bylaw, if we say, there's got to be a decommissioning plan, and then move how it's calc, housing, how it's done, or how it's calculated into a procedure document, gives us more flexibility to improve, and thou shalt have an operations plan, thou shalt have a decommissioning plan, see the rules and regs. That could be a way of improving things. Oh, question that's come up recently is, what kind of control can we exercise over site prep? Can we condition that they can't start site prep until such and such an event occurs? It's not clear today that we can condition it at all. Once, once we issue, they can go out and start cutting trees down the next day, whether they have an interconnect agreement or whatever. So what, what can we do to improve our control there? Specific to solar, what do we want to do about, how can we condition interconnect agreements? Or the status of, on the application process? Or what other kinds of external agreements can we condition for an application? We talked, and we've talked extensively about health, safety, and welfare, that's a very broad criteria, and we've exercised it, but it's, because it's so broad, it's subject to interpretation. I don't know if there's any way to tighten that up. Certainly, we need to make sure that we don't fall into the trap of being inconsistent from application to application, that we apply a level of health, safety, and welfare standard to one project that seems inconsistent with another project. Just, we've talked about changes in ownership. Special permit goes with the land, what rights or obligations or information can we require with a change of ownership? Change in ownership doesn't abrogate the special permit, because that's associated with the land, but that goes along with the next one, credit wor, citizens have raised the issue of credit worthiness and things like that. I don't know what we can do to regulate that, but I raise the topic.
Yeah, the, go ahead.
So I know you're in the middle of a presentation, but it...
No, just go ahead.
A thought just occurred to me, that we've been so focused on these current applications of solar for large ground-mounted solar arrays, and on decommissioning, but we haven't really considered the possibility of when a solar array becomes obsolete, that the proponent will come back and want to put up a new one in the same location and extend that use.
You're right, we need to clarify that, I think we've discussed that briefly, that we should be clear, but just replacing a panel here or there, that's just operations.
But wholesale.
Yeah, wholesale, we haven't talked about, so...
And what happens to the decommissioning and...
All of that, yes.
Yeah, so...
So those are things, that, to me, would be part of, right now, decommissioning tends to be written either in terms of default or end of life. We could, we could perhaps expand, that's a good thought, to clarify, you know...
Decommission or recommission.
Re-commissioning.
And I would say there's a, just a little bundle of financial assurance issues here, some related to decommissioning, some related to the credit worthiness of applicants. I think one thing that we have in mind is to sit down with the town administrator, whose job it is to develop a budget for this town and assure its bond rating and its own credit worthiness, to make sure that we're, what we're putting together makes sense to him, as we don't, would not want to, for the town to take on risks that, that are unforeseen and uncovered in his analysis.
And beyond that, we're saying, there perhaps are other land uses that require decommissioning. If somebody builds an oil treatment facility, well, we don't have a decommissioning standard for that, I don't know if we want to, but if we move it into the rules and regs...
Then we can apply it.
We get, we get more flexibility.
Yeah, a recycling facility.
Yeah, there's, or...
There are a whole bunch of different...
That aren't really addressed in the bylaws.
That would be applicable to.
Right.
Or could be applicable to.
Right now, there are very few triggers for special permit, one is the solar...
Site plan review.
Excuse me, no, special permit, as well as, but I was talking about special permit, but there are similar...
Right, you're right.
So for site plan review or special permit, there's only two that I know of. In the solar bylaw section, there's a trigger that says if it's a large-scale ground-mounted solar array, you've got to have a site plan review, and you've got to have a, and the other is a residential subdivision over 30 acres, perhaps it should be less, a residential subdivision smaller than that, perhaps there's some other triggers that should auto, there may be one in the, in the WV1R district that I haven't read yet, but there may be some triggers in there as well. Did I miss any triggers, Ken, there might, I don't...
No, just the parking standard is...
Oh, right, yeah, the parking standard is also a trigger. Do we want others? Is 30 acres too small, too big?
The other option is the square footage of the development as well, too.
Yeah, so we, we're looking for, are there other things that we want to trigger, site plan review or special permit? Automatically, even, you know, whereas I'm also saying we could go back and look at the use table and look at as of right uses and add a requirement. Specific, what page was I on here? Oh, that was special permit, now, same thing with site plan review, as of right uses, where we want a site plan review, trigger, same trigger that Sheri mentioned, that it could be, that the trigger could, do we want it to trigger site plan review as well as special Now that we're separating site plan review and special permit, we need to perhaps add a requirement that site plan reviews are recorded in the registry of deeds. And right now, do we want to add decommissioning and bond requirements for site plan review, which traditionally, we got that protection, because site plan review and special permit were tightly coupled? So we don't want to lose any of the benefits of special permit if we want to carry them back to site plan review where appropriate. Performance guarantees, with a form that amounts to annual proof of renewal maintenance. So that was including performance guarantee standards, which are different than bonds, or the bonds that we get through tripartite agreement, some additional guarantees. And if we separate special permit and site plan review, we need to define a process if the applicant feels the site plan, the conditions of the site plan are, we need, they need an appeal process, we have to say what that is. So that's, we can't deny a site plan review, but we could condition it, and the applicant could be very unhappy with the conditioning, so you need an appeal process. Okay, agrivoltaics, as I said, that was, Sheri discussed this earlier, that was introduced by a new state law in August of 2022, which removes our ability to apply special permit to any agrivoltaic project at all. There are some requirements in there, so it's not completely, you know, anybody can't come up and say, well, this is an agrivoltaic project. One of the issues that we face in town, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Ken, we have no agricultural zoning in town, but I think the trigger in town might be if it's 61A, 61A property.
That's right, 61A.
Yeah. If, if, if it was 61A property, they could perhaps apply the agrivoltaic law to their property.
They have to meet 61A?
Well, that's the only way.
The criteria 61A is six contiguous acres, so if I was a hobby farmer, I got four acres that links me up.
I, I'm speculating, because the law was written that it has to be agricultural land, and I, we don't have any other way, I don't know, is there any, there's no other way to really define agricultural land in Wareham, right?
Well, based on the state definition of agricultural uses. And they're protected under the state law, so you'd have to, like a piggery, it's on 10 acres of land.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's a cranberry bog, does it become wetlands?
Well, that's the whole thing that's in court right now. The Conservation Commission says, our, wetlands bylaw says you can't do solar, they're interpreting, I think the state law has abrogated that finding, but we'll wait for the court to rule.
The state law has abrogated the wetlands?
The wetlands interpretation that it's a three-part thing. Cranberry bog is defined as a wetland, by definition in our bylaw. A bog is a wetland, whether it's an upland bog or a lower, there, and then it goes on further to say, thou shalt not disturb wetlands, which a solar project would be, over the cranberry bog would disturb wetlands. I think that's counter to where the state is going with the agrivoltaics.
I wouldn't necessarily go that far.
Well, that was the, my conclusion, but we need to...
Yeah, we can talk about it.
Yeah.
If you can change your, if you have green cranberries, you can, you can go blubber, if you go blueberries, you can go grass.
Right, that's all, but anything that's agriculture, you can now pretty much put solar over it, as long as, there's some standards for how much yield you need to maintain and things like that. Anyway, we need to, we're saying we need to think about that and deal with that in our process of procedures, and the key issue is if we can't do special permit, even for those uses, we, we got to make sure that we can at least do a site plan review and have some influence and condition it. And then can we bond it? I don't know, condition, have, deal with the aquifer, you know, so, we need to deal with it, that's what we're suggesting. Rules and regs, flexible guidelines to assure that, you know, we talked about the quality, flexibility, where legal permissible, changing areas of technology, and they have to dovetail with the bylaws so that they're integrated, all the things we said in the last session. Clearly, we need to quickly address the issue of batteries, as we're seeing from the solar projects today. One of the things I want to remind everyone, though, all of the zoning protection solar projects that are in the queue, none of this is going to help, they're all subject to 2019. So we still have to rely on Attorney Bowen's interpretation that site plan review with special permit is legitimately required. Do we want to go back and look at the use table and get rid of ice houses, piggeries, some, some uses that are probably no longer relevant?
Who knows, we might get blasted back into the previous century. You never know.
Yes. Okay, so...
That opens up a whole series of issues with the use table, and what other uses you want to put in there as well, too?
Yeah.
There've been some issues that have come up recently where there wasn't something that was listed on the use table that the building commissioner had to enforce with...
Brewery, or a wine room, or something, a wine...
But that was, really, the last bullet on there is, if a use is not enumerated, is it permissible?
If the building commissioner finds out it's similar to an existing use on the table, yes.
And that's why we don't want to, how much discretion, Mr. Attorney's doing a good job by all accounts, but how much...
And he's placing a lot of discretion in the hands of one person.
Right, and he may not be here next week, and the next person could be less discriminating. So we need to, Ken, anything where we need to really be clear that we don't want some kind of discretionary use, or we want to control how much discretion, we need to add it to the use table. How much of that we can get done by town meeting, but clearly, Sheri and I, what did we say, we're going to, we're going to get Article 15 to town meeting?
Or don't.
Or die trying.
Yes.
It may not, it may not have all of these things, but clearly...
It's going to have batteries.
Well, it might come back the next town meeting. Every town meeting, we'll just go over one more.
Bring it back again.
Well, we've been trying to fix these articles for a long time, and it's a very hard process.
Really complex.
But, you know, damn it, it doesn't get done unless you work on it.
No, it's absolutely true, but, and, and...
I have no idea what that is, Carl, it's all over the...
Getting through it incrementally is better than not getting through it at all.
That's right, yeah. But I think there are some things that, that could potentially bite us if we don't...
You have a copy.
That's a good copy.
Always.
It's on my paper.
Kind of always, yeah.
Okay, good. You can use it again, it's on one sheet, it's for...
Any other comments? Are we going in the right direction? Did we miss anything?
No, I think you're really going right on target.
Battery, and the Alternative Energy Commission, we think batteries are a big deal, we need to be clear on, are they health, safety issue or not?
Yes.
Yeah, because they're not going away.
Oh, no, clearly, everything you read is battery, excuse me, I don't want to say batteries, storage, energy storage is critical to the future of the energy plan under the current...
Administration.
Yeah, as Alan said, they don't care if they cut all the trees, as long as they meet their percentage by whatever year they pick, which they probably won't, they don't care.
And, and we need more flexibility with respect to energy, because the state is changing... And, and we need more flexibility with respect to energy because the state is changing, and I sent you guys a note, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, there's like 10 or 12 different bills that are all, they're not even consistent.
Yeah, they're all over the place.
That's, that would not be surprising, but, you know, it's clearly a matter of great legislative interest, so, yeah, we need to keep our eyes on it.
The reality of the State House is, they're there to present something to the body. It doesn't mean anything to them in a lot of cases. They just have to put their name on a whole bunch of stuff.
Well, that, and I, I mean, they're obligated if they have a constituent who brings something forward, technically, they're obligated to present it.
Those go nowhere, ever. Actually, you never say never, but hardly ever.
Hardly ever, and not this year, is what I understand.
It's not in the budget.
Yeah.
And anyway, we're, we're looking to give the planning board more flexibility to respond to quickly changing conditions around us.
Yep.
Yep.
And rules and regs is definitely the way to do it. Anything else? Do we, now, is it, it's gonna be strictly you and Sheri, like, all in or, I mean, I know we can't have more than three people working on it at one time, but we can do a workshop now and again, right?
Yes, we, we can continue to come back. So the, like I said, the acts of plan, what Sheri and I think we're gonna do, and we're gonna meet on Wednesday, we're gonna take each of these points and take Ken's draft and see, has it been addressed in the draft?
Yep.
If not, what do we, what do we recommend, you know, in terms of wording improvements?
Right, how to incorporate it.
How to incorporate, or, no, not this time, or this goes in the rules and regs and hopefully get a draft pretty quickly, next draft pretty quickly.
So, and once that draft is constructed, then would you suggest a workshop so that everybody can weigh in?
Oh, yeah, so you have something else to look at. That, that seems reasonable, right, Ken?
That sounds good.
Then there's the ZBA, which I think at some point needs to be brought in.
Well, yeah, I, I, we should at least let them know we're doing this.
Yeah, that'd probably be a good idea.
Not that I wanna...
Jane, you can do that.
But yes, they certainly will find out when we have the public hearing.
I already have a target on my back for them.
Anything else?
I don't think there's anything else on the agenda. And I'm sorry, I tried to go as fast as I can.
No, it's, I mean, it's all good stuff. I'm just, I'm still suffering. I was up for 26, 27 hours. I'm still, I'm still on Italian time. I'm not functioning right now.
When did you get back? Oh, we could close the...
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Senator Corvus, seconded. Thank you. Mike DePiste, all in favor, Sheri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.